Okay, I think we're ready to go. Paul, thank you for turning my mic up just a hair. Paul, could you turn me up just a bit? Turn my mic up, thank you. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Yeah, hi, I think we're, okay, test, 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 thank you. I think we're ready to get started. As we call this meeting to order, first of all, thank you all for being here. We always appreciate the people that take time to come and attend our city council meetings. We do have a tradition here that's a cherished tradition in our community, and that is that we open in prayer, and Laura Creach with United Christian Church and a whole lot more involved in our community is going to open us in prayer this evening. Laura, thank you so much for being here, it's good to see you.
Please stand. Oh, Holy Spirit, I ask that you be with us, everyone in this room this evening. Help each of us to listen attentively to one another, respecting each opinion that is expressed, helping our city council and our mayor to discern each situation and help them to make wise decisions on the matters that are being presented today. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, and just for all.
Laura, thank you so much, thank you. Thank you for your faithfulness in attending all the times that you do, and you don't even have to, but you're here, thank you. Let's begin with roll call. Rodriguez.
Here.
Jengula.
Here.
Fields.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Hammerfield.
Here.
Griffin.
Here.
All present. So, proposed amendments to the agenda, I do have one just a brief change, and that is we are going to adjourn into executive session at the end of our consent agenda. Well, actually, I have a quick question for Doug. Doug, is your Aid Bailey representative, Kristin Driggs, here? Hi, so we will listen to you before we go into executive session, so you don't have to wait, you're welcome. Okay, so that's the only change that I have, is there any other proposed amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, I would stand for a motion to adopt the agenda as stated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, and then I would stand for a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda would be, actually, staff communications, Rodney, can we do staff communications later? Is this just planning and zoning? Is it pretty short?
There were six public hearings, but...
Okay, let's do it, we're gonna do that at the end, okay, so we'll move that one back a little bit. Okay, we're gonna move into our new business item 5-1, and this is Aid Bailey representative, Kristin Diggs, she's presenting the fiscal year 2024 audit results. Doug, do you have any comments before we get started?
Thanks, Mayor, no, we've had a very good professional working relationship with Aid Bailey over the years, and sometimes we don't agree on every single question or issue, but we have a very professional relationship, which is the basis of independent auditor. During COVID, we weren't able to have them come and present to us, but now that we're completely past that, we want to share the audit with the council, the audit results, the finding, the process they go through, and make that clear for the council and the public, that we have a clearly presented financial statement.
Thank you, thank you, Doug, well, welcome.
Thank you, all right, well, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. So, I'm here to present the 2024 audit results, so the financial statements as of September 30th, which were issued at the end of March. So, I just wanna talk about high level, what happens during an audit, so there's two different aspects of an audit, there's what we call our single audit, which is our testing that we do over the federal funding that the city receives. There's also the financial statement audit, where we're looking at the, you know, your balance sheet items, your statement of activities, your fund financials, we're looking at that as well, so with both of them, we take a risk-based approach, so what that means is we're looking at what changed in the systems, if there's new funding that's come through from the federal government, has the federal government deemed it high risk, so with a lot of the COVID funding, that was deemed high risk, so that has helped cause some of those programs to be audited year over year. We make the determination based upon, you know, if there were any findings in the prior year, what we've tested in the prior year, what new programs and everything, we make a determination of what programs we're gonna take a look at this year, and then we wrap that up during our year-end testing towards the end of it. With the financial statement, again, this is something where we started the process back in last year's fall, so we had field work in January of 2025, and then we started the process in the fall, talking with Doug and Michelle, and just saying, okay, what went on during the year, what changed, what do we need to take into consideration this year, we walked through their concerns, new funding that they'd received and everything like that, so that way we have a game plan coming into the audit. And then again, similar to that, we do take a risk-based approach, where we go through, and materiality comes into play with the different, the different funds that the city has, we're also doing confirmation over your significant balances, we're performing sampling, we're pulling a lot of information, or actually, management is pulling a lot of information for us, we're performing analytics, inquiry, and substantiation over the balances, and then based upon all that, we're able to form an opinion. So with the single audits, we took a look at three different single audits this year, we looked at the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, what we like to refer to as SLRF, we have the Bureau of Reclamation Water Recycle Program, we also looked at the capitalization grants for clean water state revolving funds, so with that, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on compliance for the federal programs, and so in the act for that you guys hopefully look through, it was on pages 160 through 162, it is an unmodified opinion. So, one of the things we do when we go through a single audit is we're looking both for compliance and for controls, so if we wanna make sure that, you know, we go through the compliance supplement, what the federal government has deemed that we need to look through, we look through that, make sure we don't see anything, and then we also look and see if there's a control mechanism in place to where if something were to go awry, would it get caught? When we did look through procurement specifically related to suspension and debarment, we could not find where there was evidence that had taken place, in discussions with management and everything, we're able to see that it probably had, we just couldn't test the fact that it had taken place prior to our testing, we went through and we did not see where any of the vendors used, had been suspended or debarred, but you are required to keep that documentation, so because of that, we were kind of stuck and had to give a material weakness on internal control, just over that specific thing, in talking with Doug and everything, they have come up with a game plan of how they're gonna address it, there's a corrective action plan that they have implemented, and a change in policy to make sure that that will not be a finding going forward. As far as the financial statements go, one of the things we want to make you aware of is there are significant estimates in your financial statements, so one of this relates to the Percy liability that's on the books, it's an actuarially determined calculation that comes from Percy, and basically you book your piece of that liability, there's also significant estimates related to allowance for uncollectible accounts receivable, as well as the value for contributed infrastructure. There were no significant transactions that took place during the year, a lot of it was pretty consistent with the prior year, as far as the opinions go, we did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, so that was on pages 17 through 20, as well as an unmodified opinion on internal control of our financial reporting, so if there was a breakdown in, based upon our testing, if we would have found any material audit adjustments, anything like that, that's where we'd have the opportunity to talk about it, there weren't material audit adjustments that we found, so it is an unmodified opinion. There, like I said, there's no adjustments in the current year, there were four past adjustments, and part of that was related to cleanup in the current year, so one of them related to when they went through and they trued up the depreciation expense in the current year, in the business type activities found, in the business activities fund, they found that there was some depreciation that needed to be trued up, so they passed on the prior period aspect and just trued it all up in the current year, another one related to the opioid settlement, so there was a true-up related to that on the fund, on the grants and contract fund, and then at the government-wide level, so the first set of financials that you see, that one, the receivable and the deferred inflow of resources, that one was off as well. So, the other one that we did have, and this was a management choice, is a lot of the investments, unless they have to, are recorded at cost year over year, and so that's one that Doug and I go rounds on every year, but it is required under GAAP to be recorded at fair market value, and so on that piece, we passed on as much as we could, and the rest of it, Doug did record, so that is another pass adjustment that we had. Other than that, no other concerns came up during the audit, we really appreciate everyone's help in getting through, it's not a small feat with the amount of transactions and everything that we're looking through, so management has really done a really good job helping us get through the audit in a timely manner, so each year it gets better, so, any questions?
Thank you so much, appreciate that, council, do you have any questions?
Mayor.
Yes.
Would it be possible to get a copy of this sent to us, since it wasn't in the packet?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I've already sent you a copy of it.
If there are no questions, thank you so much, appreciate the review, thank you for taking time to come and to actually share it with us, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Yep, you too.
We do have one more item before we go into executive session, before I ask for that motion, that is 5-2 on the agenda, this is an action item, it's to authorize the mayor to sign a resolution amending the NAPA records policy, number one, to reflect changes to the public request fee schedule allowed by House Bill 253, and two, cleanup changes to reflect current practices. Peter Kontos is here to answer any questions, or Shar, but since Peter's waiting, I thought we'd go ahead and move to this item.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
How many in the past year, maybe six months, whatever you wanna conjure up, a number to give me, non Idaho residents have requested a public record through the city of Napa?
So, Mayor Kling and Councilman Griffin, as a rough estimate, I'd probably say that about maybe a quarter of the public records requests that we get are non-residents of Idaho, and then we usually average about 100 public records requests per month, so about 25 non-residents per month.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I could just add a little bit of clarification, I believe Peter was also including police as well.
So, for those numbers, no, those are just for the city aside from police, and then with NPD included, it would actually be significantly more, because NPD does get a much higher volume, including the non-resident requests than just the general city requests that I process.
Thank you so much for knowing that, off the top of your head, yeah, thank you, Peter does an amazing job.
Can I ask a follow-up, Mayor, if we're able to at least discuss it, what are 25% of our public requests out of non-residents or out-of-staters requesting, what is a theme in what they're requesting?
So, that's a good question, it's definitely pretty broad, I'd say a lot of them are generally building permit-related, so a lot of them will just try to be doing basically their due diligence when it comes to buying properties, a lot of times they'll be using firms that are located outside of Idaho, sometimes it'll be basically different companies that want general planning and zoning-related records, and then sometimes some general engineering-related requests, but I'd say of those, those three different types of requests are by far the most common for both resident and non-resident requests. Thank you so much.
Mayor, could I just comment to that?
Thank you, Peter.
We also get a lot of requests to utility billing, they're looking to see who has outstanding debts and accounts, and this is generally from outside, they're, on the accounts payable, they wanna see if we have any accounts payable, checks we've written and not cashed, these people looking for ways to cash in on various, if we send a check and it hasn't been cashed by somebody after a certain amount of time, it goes to the state, SCH to the state, and then people can go claim that money, so some people run a business based on trying to claim unspent money, so we get a lot of those.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, it is an action item, which is to authorize the mayor to sign the resolution amending NAPA records policies, as already shared, what, I guess that was, excuse me, there was a motion and a second, we were in discussion, now we're ready for roll call. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Jengula.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you, Shar, for that look and catching me, I appreciate it greatly, I totally forgot. Okay, at that, Peter, you did a great job, thank you. So, at this time, I would stand for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061E.
So moved. Thank you.
Roll call. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Jengula.
Yes.
Fields.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. As we adjourn into executive session, you know what, you can enjoy these beautiful flowers up here, a special thank you to Councilman Dale Reynolds on this one, and this one is from Barbara Causel and a colleague at Christian Housing, which was just beautiful, so anyway, we will be stepping out for probably 30 minutes, and we'll come back to resume at about 10 till 6:00. Thank you all. In some ways, I don't work for them, but I do respect that, I would not wanna tell you to call when they said no to me, so we'll just step into our, step into our, it's how's that? We're not gonna talk. Yeah, we're not even touching on it. There is no executive. There is no executive session. I have no idea. Yeah, 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 so she says, so why, when is your visit? And then I said, I know.
No, every time.
Nobody even knows I'm here, they don't scan, nothing. What do you even know I'm here? Something about, I've had the duty free star, and right. Go to county, don't wait in line, just go to the duty free store, and if you're in the front of the line, you can't wait. And so, I went married again, my daughters don't like her. And then I got this like little skull, clear skull, like, and then my daughter said, make sure you don't use, I just put it in. It was amazing, so, yeah, it was great, and it was so weird. Oh, nobody was there. No, I'm sorry, and it doesn't matter, I was like, I was like, people are sick, like, I'm like, I've been sober like 20, you know, 24 years, like, there's a lot of us, though, a lot of us. I know. I think you have people say, hey, here's, here's the sixth, third part, is, uh... Who talks? I'm sorry. Nobody else is going to accept that this year, so don't try to guess what I mean. So everybody knew that I was. And then I had to laugh at myself. So that was funny. But it doesn't bother me. And people pray, because they're not paying. I just counted on the. I did say I could have a large job. Well, I have something to say with this, um, with recovery. This training center, this healthcare, not locally, like they want, I just talked to their, their friends, and so they want to write something out to your parents. But I said, look, you know, I don't want to, I want to be really transparent. I, geez, you know, and I, I live in the house and everything, but I don't want to share it with someone. I don't want to, except for, I want to, you know, at the center. I want to like try to help in like what I do. Part of that is getting paid when I'm working. So. They were, they are hiring. Contract. So that's part of. Time, but I don't think they give me interest. So there's something I can afford. Used to be awesome. Things away for free, like today. She was like, can we get Claudia Weatherman to be, um, or Kelsey or. And I said, huh, not sure. I mean, that's part of my networking. That's what I would do for a job. You know, like, you know, sure. So I said, look, I said, Claudia, Claudia, I'm gonna say. For our, these managers, uh, to love us. Are you looking for the grants or am I just writing? Am I, you know, there's a lot, you know, there's not a big difference. They hate, rent is rampant, that's one thing. Looking for grants too, that's another. So that's why I say. But so coming back to New York City. I did go, oh, well, I won. Canada, I went seven days. I checked right in. So I took, I had cash with me, so I took, after one, uh, cash out. And it was like after good late last night. So I took my original. Only thing I'm gonna spend it, actually, trace today. So then, you know, I get to order and, um, halfway, halfway, like I say. So I had to call him and I'm panicking. I'm like, okay, turn around. Seven hours to drive back to Canada. And, uh, I'm gonna have to go. You know, Arlo, whatever, they're just leaving for the day. And I said, look, somebody's gonna be there, I need somebody to go after every, I see that money, you know. So they did, they found it, they've got, maybe say how much is there. So they sent me a check. And I said, well, I guess I can loan up or maybe not, it's like a rate being to loan up that money right this minute. What I need to know, I want it. And I made sure, there's a email, right now. Two, and I'm like, in U.S. dollars. Canadian dollars. So I know what it, I never used to say, like, I never even have, like, put it in a, I remember it, so I thought, you can just do it. But anyways, I just did my fire on the beach, had some guy help me. He was trying to start a fire, too, because I had a kindling up, but he was good. It was horrible. And neither one of us would have got a fire started, but, um, so he was just helping. Right now, and so we got it started, and he had fun with his first kid on the front, yeah, so. So he gave me, I can, well, yeah. Come on here, I wish to show it, sand, every, every, it was so windy. But we did it, we got the first. But it was fun, I went to the channel, the gardens, and it was amazing. So beautiful. They have trees up on their, like, real big trees. They do that, you know, I'm like, so I guess you, you got, you can do things. Where are you going now? What's gonna happen with me going then? Oh, yes. So. Well, you, because there's something on the problem. Can't make sure. That's true, that's true. It happens on top of all this. So. I wanted to be like, I was such a. They didn't have anybody in there. Our family said it's disjointed like that too, you know, stuff. That would be a cool thing. I've already, you know. But, um. That's what I was trying to allude to. I would tell her. My, when Tyson, my oldest, she's three, she uses. I, Claudia. You gotta get up and you gotta get back up here right now. She's like checking, she's like, oh my God. You know, like. Everybody's sandwich, everything we got. Go back upstairs. And, well, I mean, it's, it's very, very, I'm sorry, he's really not a part. He just spent twenty years. And so, like, he's, it's his jaw, his full tie bit off. Uh, he's on the ground. He's, uh, he's standing there and I just. And he's like. Yes. I'm saying, very, very. Because, I hope, it's like, you know, the nurse might come up, maybe help. And so, because I know it's not time, really, but, um, he's like sort of, he's like, she can just eat your sandwich there. And I'm like, so terrible, Robert, I go, please. Are you kidding me? He just never told me, so damn happy to this day. But, yeah, it's just, and then we, yeah, this is funny. So both my kids came super jobs. I had no time, I barely got to the hospital. The second one, they didn't, now, eight times, they didn't, like, it's, I'm not, right? Not even, there's nothing. You can see that, there's pictures of each of them. There's, freaking out because they can't get the shot. And it's happening really fast. My daughter's, my child, and so we're like. Which I was. So well, because I had those nine months. Now my daughters, like, they're, they, she was supposed to be trying to find. And, um, outside, we have, and, uh. But, and so apparently, we had something. And, uh. It's so, she's so, she's like, she's like. Roger, I told you. And so she. My friends, she was, she had a, she had a, I'm like, that was, how do I like? Honestly, I planned her, like, I, the manager, Alfred, who, like, I'm talking about. I, it's like thirty-two, and I have, you know, I, I mean, I felt good, and I was age. I, everything, everything I never did with the first one, right? And. This was, uh. We were really super happy, we, you know, and, uh. So she finds out about screaming. She, she, she survived, and that must be, that she heard the scream. And, and, and. Right? Get out of me! It hurts. And she, she was very, she was, I mean. And so she's like this tip top thing. Those, the, so, um, they're, she was, and, and so. So, um, there are, I don't think they could. She's, she tries. She's like, why are I trying? I know what you're saying, but she's not. Here, you know, and she says, uh. If it's Riza, taking you back to. Oh, yeah, that's happy. I just, you do that. I mean, really, you're really saying. I mean, we've been screaming for ages. How many women? You were really quiet. Um, he looks like he would be one of those, I saw somebody else, he was like. Yeah, all about. I've seen people, I can, yeah, you can tell. How you do that? So loud, we did literally, like, you know, having. She was in the. She had to take, so her job was to take care of our people. So everybody had a job. So that was her job. So she was waiting outside of the, right in the car. And I was screaming so loud, she said, let's walk for a walk. And took her downstairs to the vending machines because I was so loud. And talked about it for this day. She's like, yeah, all right, you were behind me. And it was, it was. So, that's a bummer. You get to go somewhere.
This is like, I'm not going to that. I'm sorry. Yeah. You know what, I'm, I'm, I mean, just kind of. But it's one people. I had a little run in there. No. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
The original concept was to allow variance for installing a patio shade to be near the lot line. Are you our applicant this evening or representing?
I'm representing. Tammy is my sister-in-law, so I've had the pleasure of representing her.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
And go ahead and share name, address, and then we'll dig in.
Yep. My name is Bill Deel, and we live at 435 West Island Court here in Napa.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, could you mind lifting that mic up?
Yeah, and could you repeat so the representation?
Sure. My name is Bill Deel. We live at 435 West Island Court here in Napa. We have a little PowerPoint for you. It's ready to go. What we're looking for is a variance for Tammy's house at 3707 Edgeview Drive here in Napa. Basically, what we're saying is that Tammy moved here due to some health concerns and bought a house. We've remodeled it, done a nice job with the house. We weren't aware that the house was located, that they had built the house to the end of the property, so anything we do beyond that is within the variance. So we should have done a little bit more due diligence on that. We didn't. At that point, we looked for that, so we kind of went forward. So I'll kind of show you what we're talking about. Here's the front of Tammy's house. And those are the reference slides. What Tammy's views is she has a beautiful view of the Napa City Pump Complex right behind it. So we have a nice view. The people that are affected by this are basically the Napa City workers. This is the hillside that's directly behind that goes to the east side of her property. This is where the property, where we're talking about, the hillside to the back to the other side would be affected. Here is the side where we're looking at putting this proposed pergola or patio cover. This is the west back of the patio cover. This is about an eight-foot drop from, it contains the, where they tiled a ditch and sits in there. So we've got some drop, nothing that will be affected by any sightline. This is the proposed look from the back for where Tammy's house is in the red on the left is where Tammy's house's patio cover would be. On the right is, was actually, we built this house for transparents in 2006, where there wasn't a variance when we put the patio cover on. This is a view of the neighbor, which is the patio cover that currently exists. There's Tammy's house with the area at the back is the area that's affected. It is eleven feet by twenty-three point four feet would be the, the width is eleven feet. The length is twenty-three point four feet. It is, we've got the approval of the Architectural Committee as long as we get, you know, the city council approval from the Greenbrier HOA. So we've got a signed copy of that. The acceptance is within those guidelines. And then there is just the look of the patio cover on the back of the house. So what it would be would be a metal prefabricated patio cover on the back of the house on the left-hand side. And so that's what we're looking for. Do we have any questions? And thanks for considering this variance.
Mayor.
Yes.
Bill, the property that, on that slope, who owns that?
I think the homeowners association owns down about four feet, you know, four feet down. And then I think it's a ditch easement in, underneath that, there's a tiled ditch in there in the middle before you get to the city property.
Okay, so it's city-owned property then beyond that?
Yes, it is. Yeah, that's where the pump, that area where the pump house property is located, that belongs to the city.
Thank you.
Is there a question or comment coming from here?
So the easement is under Napa Meridian Irrigation District. So it's under their jurisdiction for that easement that goes right behind the houses.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
So does it show, is it a hundred-foot easement wide? The map you're looking at?
For the easement line, I don't know the exact distance. Maybe Daniel can touch on that. I just know that the easement starts right at the back of their property line, and they would need to have an encroachment agreement if this were to be approved.
I have a question. Are they asking to go into that easement or up to the line?
So there is the standard within the RP District, an eight-foot irrigation, eight-foot utility easement in their backyard, and that's what they're asking to encroach into. And there's another irrigation easement behind that. Normally for utilities, there's a five-foot to eight-foot irrigation, not irrigation, utility easement within the back, and that's what they're actually encroaching into.
So did they, I have a quick, I'm sorry.
Will staff?
Thank you.
So there, the utility easement is a standard rear lot utility easement. There are no city utilities within that easement. The irrigation line in this subdivision runs in the private street in front of the lots. And then behind that fence, there is a Nampa, or Boise Cuna, Boise Project irrigation easement for the lateral that runs behind that house that I believe is tiled.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that clarification. Is there another question?
Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, clarification. Is the patio cover crossing the fence or stopping at the fence?
Stopping at the fence.
Thank you.
Yeah, it'll be, I think, two feet on this side of the fence.
Feet inside.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
Bill, the awning that you are talking about putting in, is it larger than the one that's existing to the neighbors? Or that's the neighbors, or is it about the same size?
It'd be about the same size roughly. It's a little, that one is a little bit, I think that one's fifteen feet. This one would be eleven in length. I mean, I mean, in width, it would be fifteen feet versus eleven feet, so it's going to be about four feet shorter.
Are there other questions from council at this time? Bill, thank you so much. We will have you come back, so you'll have the closing comments in just a few minutes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Damian Snodgrass, Associate Planner. The requested action item for today is a variance to Code 10-13-4, which is the required fifteen-foot setback within the RP zoning. And the concept is for a patio shade cover. So the property details, in 2004, this land was annexed in and developed as Greenbrier Estates, and it's a little bit unique for a single-family zone. It's zoned under RP Residential Professional. And another piece of history for the land is recently in 2025, a variance for similar patio cover was denied under VAR-00180-2025. The current jurisdiction and status, it's within the city limits. It's under the RP zoning designation, and the comp plan designates it as residential mixed use.
Do you mind pausing right there? Because the last denial, if I remember correctly, that backed up to an actual person's yard, not to the irrigation piece, correct?
That is correct. It was within the middle of the subdivision.
Right. Just wanted to clarify that.
And so to the north, to the east, to the south, we have more RP residential zoning. And to the west, we have the RS6 zoning, but it is actually a city pump house. So here are some of the applicable regulations. This is just the purpose of a variance. And here are the variance criteria that will be, have to be determined by council. And these are the applicable regulations when it comes to the spatial and bulk requirements of the setbacks, as well as the repair replacement of structures occupied in operation as non-conforming uses. So if this variance were to be granted, it would be a non-conforming use, and it could be rebuilt. So this is just to build a better image of the site. Here's a plat map. Highlighted in yellow is the area where the applicant's house resides, and it just shows that eight-foot rear easement on there. Here's the proposed location of the patio cover. And here are some photos provided in the narrative by the applicant. So for correspondence, we received two comments, one from the Building Department and one from Engineering. The Building Department's comment is if easements allow for it, the Building Department approves the patio cover, including the overhangs, to be installed three feet or more from the property line if it is constructed with fire protections, then it may be installed closer to the property line. For Engineering, upon the requested variance, Engineering requests that the owner shall obtain an encroachment agreement and follow all city policies. Here are some of the recommended conditions of approval, that the applicant shall obtain that encroachment agreement and shall comply with all city codes, policies, and standards, including that of the Building Department. Here are the relevant facts, that the principal structure is currently built to the easement line, that the easement is eight feet, that the RP zone has a fifteen-foot setback, that the proposed encroachment is closer than three feet to the property line. VAR-00180-2025 was of similar nature and was denied. The property backs an undeveloped city water pump. The others in the vicinity have patio covers that are not in compliance with current city code. The Engineering Division has reviewed the proposal and has no objection to the encroachment request. But the proposed structure must meet all building codes and fire codes. Setbacks are established for public safety purposes. Since 2005, the properties within Greenbrier Estates, one hundred and ten total residential lots, have been constructed within their allotted building envelopes without hardship. Other shading options are available, such as umbrellas and retractable shades. A detached structure would fall under the same requirements as an attached structure, and that the principal structure was originally developed and built out near to the setback, and that the proposed structure would need to be fire-rated. Here are some conclusions for approval and some conclusions for denial. This one will sit within the council's decision. Here are your potential motions, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Damian. Yes.
Yes, I have, I have a couple. One, why would they need an encroachment easement if they're not really encroaching that?
So they're encroaching on that rear eight-foot easement. It's just a utility easement, even though there are no utilities within that. It's normally pretty standard within other single-family residential districts, but due to the zoning being RP, this one would have to come to council rather being a staff-level variance.
I see. So, okay, the other question is, do you see the setback are established for public safety purposes? There is no issue with that in this situation, is there?
That would be Mayor and Council determination for the council to decide.
Okay. I just want to make sure that there isn't that that I know about.
Any other questions? Yes.
Question? Daniel, I'm sorry. You're David, right?
Damian.
Damian.
Damon, okay. It appears the building itself is in non-compliance. Is that correct?
That is correct. Rodney, maybe you could speak about the code at the time, allowing to be built out closer?
Mayor and Council, yeah, just a couple of years ago, you changed the code to be a fifteen-foot setback. Before that, that was, it was only five, but if I remember right, that was actually eight in the RP zone. So I believe it was in compliance with the code at that time.
So what is the separation off the back of the house to the property line? Do you know?
Currently, it looks, determining from our maps, about eight feet. It looks like it was built out to that easement line.
Okay. So it appears that the irrigation easement, the tiled pipe is in a twenty-foot wide easement on the backside, and there's, did you say an eight-foot easement on the property line side?
Yep.
Okay, so the building's not on the easement itself. It's just this potential cover. Is there any utilities, I heard you say the irrigation is in the road frontage. Is there any utilities in that back easement at all?
Per Daniel, there is no current utilities within that easement.
Okay, so if a cable company came through, would they stay in the front? Or would they go in the back and then potentially have to interrupt this cover since it's over their easement?
If a fiber optic or other utility company that is allowed to utilize public utility easements, they would have a right to utilize those, this easement unless it were vacated.
Because it appears that it's a hard surface along that backside, so there would have to be some removal of concrete to be able to get underneath it.
Or some other installation method that doesn't require surface access.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can I ask a favor, and that is, and it was a couple of slides back, it said that this property was in non-compliance because of the setback. I would prefer that our records actually reflect that at the time it was built, it was in compliance. We've changed our code since then, and so I think it's a little misleading for us to say it's in non-compliance, because we changed our code after it was built. So I would just like to suggest that in future communication, that we really note that accurately, so that we don't, it doesn't lead us to believe it was done in non-compliance, because it was in compliance with the code at the time. So maybe reword the way that's done, if you don't mind, in the future. So council, do you have any other questions at this time?
Mayor.
Yes.
Damian, I'm confused. Did you say that the house was eight feet from the property line in the back?
Roughly.
And then Bill had mentioned that the patio covering is going to be eleven feet. So would it be overhang, or where am I getting off on my?
So I don't know the exact dimensions of the dimension from the cutout where the patio cover starts. The build-out line is, do I have a laser on this? Based on that jog out towards the rear property line, that's where we would measure it from.
So either way, the way the math shakes out, it's going to stop at the property line. It's not going to overhang.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. So this is a public hearing. Madam Mayor, no one has signed up to provide public testimony on this item. Is there anyone here that had intended to testify that did not get signed up, that would like to testify? Seeing high. Go ahead and come forward, and please share your name and address. Thank you. Just share your name and address, and then we'll have three minutes.
My name is Tammy Chafin at 3707, and part of my illness is I cry easily. So Bill did my presentation, but I wanted to point out a couple of things. The, before I could put it up, the Neighborhood Association, it cannot go over the fence. And to protect that hillside, I am installing gutters to protect the hillside from any erosion or anything, or flooding the workers back there. Okay, that's all I wanted to add. I really appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you for coming forward and sharing that. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Okay, seeing no one, Bill, is there anything you would like to, any closing comments that you would, and you'll have to come forward. Yes.
I think just a couple of quick comments. This would be, I mean, if worse came to worse, it could be disassembled. It's not a permanent structure. It is just bolted to the concrete. And then we are going to try to mitigate any water coming off of it and keep it on property. So using gutters and everything else, we're going to try to mitigate as much as possible. The only, the advantage for Tammy is it's just, with the sun coming in, it's pretty darn hot over there. So we do need to try to fix that for if we could. The other problem is, is with the retractables or patio umbrellas, the way the wind whips through there due to the slope, it's not, it's not prudent. I guess we would just be ripping them up. So that's the reason we do need to use a fixed structure.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Bill? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, I would stand for a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is the word of the council?
Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve. The variance as stated on our screen, and for reasons being, they've done their due diligence with the HOA. Unless Meridian and Napa Meridian Irrigation go into development, which I sure hope they don't, they're not going to be encroaching on any neighbors behind them. I know we had a very passionate, heated discussion about the same thing, but it's a different scenario, a different circumstance, and the reason for the variance process is unique. And I wish well to Tammy.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Could you revise your motion so that it's an eight-foot required setback as opposed to fifteen?
Yes. Approved amendment.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just making sure that gave Rodney enough to work with.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on that, that fifteen versus eight foot. You're just having a variance to the eight foot. Is that correct?
Well, no, there's eight feet of land there, and the variance in this case is for eight feet of setback. There is no fifteen foot of setback.
Correct.
So we pulled that out of the current code as fifteen, but that's not what the plat says. So on the screen, it's referencing the required setback of fifteen feet, but that's not the case. It'd be required eight feet.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Our motion should be approving this variance according to the eight-foot setback requirement.
Yeah, correct. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that. I appreciate that. That is correct. Okay, so I hate to say it, but we can't have a discussion off the record. Can you share your discussion during discussion? Thank you.
Mayor, I just want to make sure we understand that there's a three-foot setback off the property line. Otherwise, it has to be fire-rated construction, which is what was relayed to us in the packet.
Thank you. And I think that is a code that is a city code that they would have to adhere to, the fire rating. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion and a second. The motion was to approve. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call. Ngula.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. There you go. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move to our second public hearing. This is eight-two on the agenda. This is an action item. It's the vacation of approximately thirty-seven by ten feet of utility easement located at the southwest corner of Six North Bora Way, a point-three-three acre parcel, and the southeast corner of Six Ten Lone Star Road. Variance of Napa Code 10-8-5A requiring rear yard setback, previously five, currently fifteen. Thank you. And variance of Napa City Code 10-8-5B requiring a maximum lot size of twelve thousand square feet in an RS6, single-family residential zoning district on point-three-three acre parcel. This is at Six North Bora Way. For Gary Inbis, in Byzik, as well as, thank you, Jamie Juries, for the vacation of easement, the original concept was vacation of easement, a variance of setback and lot size maximum to permit approval of a property boundary adjustment to ensure the existing accessory structure no longer is located across the property line, and the property can be sold. And so is our applicant here. Thank you. Go ahead and come forward. And if you don't mind sharing your name again and your address, and then we'll just go through that same process we just went through with you.
Okay.
And go ahead. Thank you for pulling that up.
Yes, my name is Gary Inbis, and I live at Six North Bora Way. I've lived there for almost ten years now. And I built this garage shed there. My wife and I moved up from California and to retire in Napa. I was born and raised in Boise, so we wanted to come back here. And so we moved here and we built this place. I built her a nice garden shed out there, and then I turned around and I built myself a little shop. I went to the Building Department at the time, and I got all the setbacks from them. And I thought I'd followed them pretty good, but evidently the builder, when he built the property, offset one side five feet. And then he didn't change the measurement going across the back, so it threw the other side off five feet also. So the property ended up going on an angle instead of being square. And I've got a representative here that will be presenting the case for me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. As you come forward, thank you for sharing your name and address.
My name is Akemi Wells. It's odd, so I'll spell it for you. It's A-K-E-M-I, last name W-E-L-L-S. I live at 512 Eighteenth Avenue South here in Napa. I am a professional land surveyor with QRS Consulting, and we are working on the lot line adjustment and easement vacation for the Inbis family. Gary is a disabled individual, and he is taking care of his wife, who has severe medical issues. They are trying to sell their property so that they can move back down to California to be close to their children while she is having end-of-life issues. We have been working on this for over a year now. We found that even though they had gone through the appropriate channels in the building permitting department when they did build the shed, that the Building Department was lax in looking at exactly where the property line lay. They used the fence as justification for the property line, when in fact, the fence was put further south than the actual property line. The fence actually sits right on the right-of-way line for Lone Star. We spoke with the City Planning Department and talked to them about the best way to handle this situation. It was deemed that we could potentially put in for this variance to vacate that section of the easement that lies right behind the shed. We have spoken to the utility companies. There is nothing in there currently. Everyone was all right with us going ahead and vacating that portion. There was one sticking point with Lumen Company. It is a company out of the south. They did send in a letter stating that they no longer have any utilities in that, and they had no problem with the vacation as well. As for the lot line adjustment, we are proposing to move the lot line to match the existing fence that is there and which the Inbis family and Jamie Juries believed was their property line from the very beginning. It does add about five hundred square feet to the Inbis property, which again is over that twelve thousand square feet, but considering that the Inbis property with the additional five hundred square feet is over fifteen thousand feet, the property was over that twelve thousand feet when it was created in the dove plat. So we would like to ask your permission to please allow this record of survey with the lot line adjustment to go through, as well as this easement vacation, so that the Inbis family can sell their property without cloud-on-title and move down south so that she can be with her family during this end-of-life time. They have lost three sales already while trying to deal with this, so we would really like to help them get this taken care of.
Thank you so much. Council, do you have any questions?
Mayor, I have a question. So looking at the area that's bounded by the green line, it appears that there's parcels A and B. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So are they looking to sell both parcels then, or just the one?
Just the one, sir. We are adjusting the lot line between the parcel closest to North Bora and the Inbis property, which is the more interior property. And we're just adjusting that to the current fence line, sir.
Okay. That was my question. I didn't know what lot line you were looking to adjust, so it'd be the ones between parcel A and parcel B.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we will have you back for, at the very end, for closing comments.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor and Council, Rodney Ashby, planning and zoning director for the record. The applicant has done a really good job of presenting their case. I do have a couple of slides that I think will help clarify some things. Just quickly, medium-density residential, the zoning is all RS6 around it, all single-family. You can see the property, it's a little bit difficult to see that, but there's a property line. As Councilman Haverfield has pointed out, the property line that they would like to adjust is right in the middle there between the two properties. And it's essentially, they want to adjust that property line over to the west to follow the current fence line where it was built. So I think I have a good history of the property describing how we got to this point. The final plat was approved in nineteen ninety-five. Two thousand and two, the fence was built in the wrong location. Two thousand and eleven, the assessor's pictures show the accessory structure had not been built. In two thousand and seventeen, a building permit was applied for, for the accessory structure, but it was not completed until two thousand and twenty-three, which is strange. Everything moved forward. They even did another building permit to enclose a portion of the building, which was a carport. And so... And so they got that permit approved, but the official accessory structure wasn't approved until 2023. So in 2018, the building permit is issued for the carport. 2018, the assessor indicates that the accessory structure's been built. 2023, as I've mentioned, they finalize the inspection and issue the occupancy. Then the applicant has been meeting with us, has been indicated for the last year and a half or so, and trying to work all of these issues out. So they do need, the things they need are variance for the rear yard setbacks, a variance for the maximum lot size, and a vacation of the easement and property boundary adjustment. In October, applicant attended a pre-application meeting with city staff, and we helped outline what needed to be done. And then they submitted their application for the property boundary adjustment. So here is a good picture, a little closer view of that. You can see the property line not aligned with the fence line. And then I overlaid this a little bit with the proposal that they're suggesting. So the red line is the property line, the existing property line. The green line is where they'd like to bump it over to the west. The blue square is where the accessory structure is. And the yellow hashed mark is the easement that's being proposed to be vacated. So that, and if I could go back just a little bit, you can see how that shed overlaps, or that, I shouldn't say shed, accessory structure overlaps the property line, and then is right up against the property line to the south. The fence line to the south is all the way out to the sidewalk, which is fine. We allow that to happen, but you can't build within the setback. And the setbacks are from the property line. So hopefully that clarified that. I think I've handled all of this. I think I can skip over most of this. Again, I wanted to just point this out, the areas in yellow, this is really good narrative for what a variance is for. Hardships must result from special site characteristics relating to the size, shape, or dimensions of a site, or the location of existing structures thereon, from geographic, topographic, or other physical conditions, or from population densities, street locations, surrounding property land use, build-out patterns or conditions, or traffic flow concerns, or other unique circumstances, and they list there historical or human error issues, et cetera. I think this probably falls within that category, the error. And then the last point there is the purpose of a variance is to provide fair treatment and to see that individuals are not penalized because of site characteristics or a site situation beyond their control. In the last meeting we had, we had a little discussion about variances and about finances related to whether a variance is, can be issued based on a financial hardship. I just wanted to point this out. This is what our code says a variance is for. That should be guiding narrative for you to make these decisions. And then, of course, the five criteria for approving variances that you've seen before, even tonight. As you can see, the RS6 zone allows for a lot size of 12,000 square feet, and this is just under that, but will exceed that if they do the property boundary adjustment to the west. So that's why they needed that variance. Okay, so vacation requests are for easements and rights-of-way shall be executed in accordance with provisions of Idaho State Code. We don't have the same kind of criteria for vacations as we do for variances or conditional use permits or annexations like that. It simply needs to follow our process and the process outlined in Idaho State Code. And then I've listed the Idaho State Code, and we have to have consent of adjoining owners to be obtained to vacate right-of-way. The applicant is the owner, and he's representing the neighbor to the west, so that has been obtained. All right, so the building department said that the new lot lines shall be a minimum of three feet from existing structures, including eve projections, so that will be analyzed at the time of the property boundary adjustment. And then Idaho Power indicated they have no utilities in the western easement along the previous property line and could support that vacation, but do have a facility within the southern easement very close to the property line. It would only support the vacation if a new or revised easement is established to protect it. I called them just to clarify this, and they provided me this drawing to the right there. The area highlighted in yellow is their facility to the accessory structure, so they just need to see that that area is protected somehow. So I put that as a recommended condition, that they provide an easement for Idaho Power to provide you the power to that structure. So those are the two conditions, the one from building and the one I just mentioned. These are the findings of fact. I think we've covered all of these, so I'm not going to go over them. And essentially, I think it comes down to the fact that there was a human error. I've talked to the building department. They can't figure out why this was approved either. I think, I think as the applicant stated, it was probably based on the fact of the inspector going out there and looking at the fence line and assuming that was the property line instead of looking at the plat and the actual property line. So I think that's the case. They built their structure after submitting a permit in both cases, so I think it makes sense that this be approved. And here's a couple of motions for your consideration.
Rodney, thank you so much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Rodney?
I have a question, Mayor. The easement that Idaho Power is looking for, will it fall underneath the building?
You mean, would it go under the building?
Actually, under it?
I don't know. That's something they're going to have to work out with them. They didn't, they didn't say specifically to me. They just said, "We just need to be able to maintain that."
So...
And we'll let our applicant answer that question when they come back, so we'll defer that.
The easement is specifically for that accessory building, though. Is that correct?
Correct, yes. The power that goes to that accessory building.
They don't anticipate in the future having any other utilities that would fall in that easement that currently is encroached upon?
Correct, yeah. Idaho Power said they don't have anything else in the easement that they're asking to vacate. So if they put a new one there, they would be fine.
And that I was a little unclear and uncertain as to the desire to give someone approval based upon an error, but it sounds like it's a city inspector error, not a builder error that we're asking for forgiveness on. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Rodney?
Mayor?
Yes.
Rodney, I would agree, this is human error. This might be a question for Daniel. I'm just curious, if Lone Star were to get widened at any point right here, allowing this variance, does that impact our availability to widen the road if needed?
Mayor, Councilman Jengula, we actually have a design for an improvement on Lone Star that is from a number of years ago for this area, and it would, it fits within the public right-of-way. And so granting of this variance, it may end up in the future with a sidewalk closer to that building than it is today, but we do have adequate room to do that because if the property were, or the building were encroaching into the public right-of-way, we would have a concern, but where it's at, we can, we can work with it.
Thanks, Daniel. Are there any other questions at this time? Okay. So this is a public hearing. Rodney, thank you. Madam Mayor, no one signed up to provide public testimony on this item. Thank you. Is there anyone here that had intended to provide public testimony tonight? Seeing no one, this is an opportunity for applicant to come back, and then you can provide some of the information that was asked, and any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am. To speak to the Idaho Power easement, I have spoken with Idaho Power. The easement will run from that edge of the building to the edge of the property line, sir. It will not go underneath the building. Yes, sir. Currently, Idaho Power uses the north-south running line at the very edge of the subdivision, and they come up through North Bora, so there is nothing right there along Lone Star. No, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Counsel, do you have any other questions for our applicant? Would you like to make any closing remarks?
I would just like to state that the Inbis have been trying very hard to follow every rule of law with this procedure. In good faith, they built with a permit, making sure that they had all their ducks in a row. Like was said, it was just a human error, and they're just trying to finalize projects that they can move home.
Thank you. You've done a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. If there are no further questions for the applicant, I would stand for a motion to close public hearing. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, with counsel, I think I hear Sebastian online. Okay. So with that, is there counsel discussion and/or a motion?
Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the vacation of the utility easement as described and presented tonight, and the various findings of fact that were covered.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from counsel? Seeing none, Rokel.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Jengula.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Now you can move forward. I hope you can accomplish what you need to, and you guys did a good job. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, we are ready for eight-three on the agenda. This is an action item. It's the proposed adoption of Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment incorporating reference to the Capital Improvement Plan and associated fees for the city of Napa as Appendix D, incorporating by reference the Capital Improvement Plan and associated fees, including impact fees, for the Napa Fire Protection District as Appendix D1. Revisions to Section 7.3.2.1 for clarity on the Napa Fire Protection District Services and the addition of Section 7.3.2.7 to outline the city of Napa's authority and intent to collect impact fire district development impact fees. And the proposed ordinance amending Title III, Chapter VII, and Title II, Chapter 17 of the Napa City Code pertaining to impact fees, specifically amending 3-7-1, 3-7-3 through 3-7-12, 2-17-1 through 2-17-5, and adding 2-17-6. This is to adopt proposed revisions to the city's and fire district impact fee collection improvement plans and associated impact fees for police, parks, streets, and fire. Bree, thank you for being here and providing an update and a report for us.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Brianna Sun, Senior Planner with the Planning and Zoning Department, for the record. The first portion of the request tonight I will be covering, and then I will turn the time over to Daniel for the CIP. But we will talk about the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment here first. So the reason for the request, and a little history here, is due to the Napa Fire Protection District having their own capital improvement plan and impact fee study separate from the city of Napa. The Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment is necessary to incorporate both the city of Napa's and the fire district's CIP into the comprehensive plan, and that is in accordance with Idaho State Code. You might as well just sit over there. The proposed tax amendments are seen here. They include the addition of Section 7.3.2.7 that outlines the city of Napa's authority and intent to collect fire district development impact fees under the terms of an intergovernmental agreement with the district. And Appendix D of the Comprehensive Plan is proposed to change to include the fire district CIP as Appendix D1. All comments received were no comment, and no comments were received from the public regarding the text amendment. And then the next slide, Idaho Code requires that the Planning and Zoning Commission conduct a comprehensive planning process, and the plan considers all existing conditions. Code also requires that a public hearing is held when amendments to the plan are considered. Additionally, Idaho Code requires that any government entity that is required to undertake a comprehensive planning process incorporate those CIPs and development impact fee studies into the comprehensive plan by reference. So this text amendment is necessary to be in accordance with Idaho State Code. These are the proposed findings for the text amendment. Staff concludes that the proposed changes to Chapter VII and the appendix of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan provide current and accurate information that can be utilized for emergency and development services planning. The changes are required by the state and are necessary as the community continues to grow. I will stand for any questions for the text amendment piece. Otherwise, if there are no questions, I will turn the time over to Daniel for the CIP.
Thank you, Bree. Counsel, do you have any questions for Bree? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Counsel, we're here today to talk about the changes in the impact fees and some ordinance changes that are needed to reflect the current situation between the Napa Fire District and the city of Napa, to reflect the fact that we are separate entities, and that's a lot of the code changes that we have going on. So I've got a presentation that talks through the process we went through to develop the capital improvement plans and the impact fee study. I'll go through it relatively quickly. If you have any questions, please stop me, and we can go into more detail. So when we look at, and online, we do have Bill Greg Gray, the attorney for the fire district, if there are questions related to that, and Colin with our consultant Tischler Beis that prepared the studies. If there are specific in detail questions, they're available for questions as well. So our impact fee studies really look at growth and what we expect to happen, the volume of growth and that, and then what we need to serve those. And so as we looked at that, this iteration of the study, we looked at the number of building permit units we are seeing throughout the past number of years, and kind of took an average of that to determine what we anticipate going forward. And so those are our trends. We looked at whether those are reasonable numbers to come in. You can see the residential pipeline we have coming in for the areas that we're looking at for growth. So we have quite a few homes that can come in, and so we feel that the numbers historically are reasonable going forward as well. So we look at those growth projections on what the new residential units are. We're looking at, over the scope of this study, so the 10-year period, we're looking at around 40,000 new residential units, and then, and 15,000 new housing units as well. So about a 35% increase over what we currently have. Non-residential, you can see here, we have those broken down into office, retail, industrial, and institutional, and see what the types of growth we're looking at historically, and then that plays into what we have coming forward. And those all then go into what we have needs for to serve. And so we're going to start with Parks and Rec, and I'll go a little more in detail with them of the process, and then go through police, fire, and streets.
Mayor, just a quick question. Daniel, the residential growth, was that city of Napa or Canyon County?
So these, we would be looking at, for the city, for the city functions, we are looking at just within the city of Napa. For the fire district area, they incorporate areas of Canyon County, and so their growth numbers are slightly different than ours because they incorporate some of that growth within the county.
So the 16,000 dwelling units, they're both city of Napa and...
Those were just the city numbers, not the fire district numbers.
Thank you.
So we, the process, when we look at the impact fees, we're looking at the incremental expansion of facilities. So we look at what our current levels of service are... expansion of facilities. So we look at what our current levels of service are, look at those growth numbers and look at what incrementally we need to add to maintain those levels of service. For Parks and Recreation, they looked at those current levels of service, what our base year is and what the growth-related portion of that would be to maintain those levels of service. And that's where we come up with these numbers here. So we're looking at, you know, around fifty million dollars in growth-related expenditures over those 10-year periods to maintain that level of service. And so we take that and we look at what specifically is within those capital improvement plans to do that. This is the list that Parks came up with for their capital improvement plan. That comes from the Parks' Master Plan that was adopted by counsel. It may have been last year or early this year. I don't remember exactly when that was done. So there's, you can see the total costs are around seventy million. The growth-related costs of those capital improvements are the seventy-two million or seventy-seven million total cost, seventy-two million of the growth-related. So there's a difference there of that five million that would not be growth attributed. And so that all plays into what the maximum allowable fee that we can charge would be. And so for parks, a single-family home would, the maximum supportable fee would be the three thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. For a multifamily unit, it is two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Currently, the fee that we charge is two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars for both. The reason, the difference for a single-family home and a multifamily unit is due to the number of residents. A multifamily unit has a lower average resident count and so a parks demand would be based on, you know, the number of people that would be in the home or the residential unit. And so that fee is smaller for a multifamily unit, though obviously when a multifamily project comes in, we're getting that for each and every unit. And so they, the, on a structure basis, they would be paying a higher fee than a single-family residence. So we look, then look at whether or not, if there are, oh, sorry. I came back from vacation and I didn't get a chance to look over this as much as I should have, I guess. So the revenues from the draft maximum fee, we look at that compared to the current level of service and then have to take out any existing fund balance that we have from that fee calculation. And so as you can see here, we have our projected revenue, our total expenditures, and then there is some portion of that fee that is not, that would be covered by non-impact fee revenues as well. This is the comparison we have to the adjacent jurisdictions here in the valley. So you can see we currently sit really right in the middle. This will move us up one spot above Kuna and so we'll be in the top third for our impact fees for parks. When we look at police, we go through the entire same process that we do with parks. It's all incremental expansion, all of that same. This, with the police fee, we are making a change to how we allocate. They've looked at the calls for service and how those calls of service were allocated previously. And it, the, the analysis shows some change going from non-residential, which was charged more previously and, or, no, I mean, that's not correct. The residential is sixty-three percent, thirty-seven percent is non-residential is how the calls for service break down when we do that analysis. So the 10-year CIP needs to keep the levels of service. We have admin facilities, training facilities, vehicles and equipment. So you've got seventeen million dollars in growth-related impacts. The capital improvement plan is here that shows where we break down for those items. And then the draft maximum supportable fees that we would be proposing. And in the, in this case, we are proposing to add a few additional categories. We currently, on our commercial fees, only charge for three categories, retail, office and industrial. We are proposing to add institutional, manufacturing, warehousing and self-storage to give us a little more granular. Oftentimes, we'll have some of those other, the manufacturing and warehousing. When we charge those under an industrial, we have a number of those where they come in and do an individualized assessment. And so we've gone with a little more granular to help capture the different types of uses in there. So proposed fees there, let me zoom in so we can see those a little better. So retail, we are, the other additional change is we are charging not based on individual square foot, we're charging by thousand square foot. And so that is another change from the existing fees. On the police side, we go up nineteen percent on a single-family and again, because of the same multifamily, less residents, you have a slight decrease in the fee on the multifamily units just because they have less people in them. On the retail side, you can see there's a significant jump. The current fee is twenty-five, or ninety, two hundred and ninety dollars per thousand square feet and that jumps up to seventeen fifty-eight. And as you can see, the remainder there, so the warehousing distribution and self-storage, those fees decrease. The others are all increases for that. Any questions on the police fees? Okay. Go through those same type of calculations, making sure that the projected revenue and the total expenditures match up and what non-impact fee funding would be required. This is the comparison with the valley. So you can see currently we were right under Boise and we go to just over Boise on the residential and a little bit under, or a thousand dollars under Boise on the retail. And for streets, we have our plan-based methodology. So these are based on our capital improvement plan for streets and what is attributed to growth versus existing deficiencies that are not related to that. Our current level of service is a level of service C. We have elected to propose fees at the existing level of service D, which is what we currently do. If we were to propose a level of service C base fee, there would be significant increases beyond what are already proposed. And so we have elected not to propose those. The other, we've made some changes to how we affect the existing levels of service. You have our level of service based on lane miles, vehicle trips and that. And then there are intersection levels of service as well that we've evaluated there to establish what our existing levels of service are.
Daniel, can I ask a question?
Yep.
Could we talk about the current level of service? Because I think I heard you say D. I'm looking at, it says our current level of service is C. We're choosing, on the screen it's, okay, but on the previous screen it said C.
Correct. So, so our current level of service on our, on our street network and our intersections is a level of service C. We've actually been able to, over, since our last study, we've been able to increase that level of service from a D to a level of service C. However, if we were to affect that, reflect that in the calculations for the study, that would expand the project list significantly to maintain a level of service C or it would create a higher level of impact fee eligibility for those and would, it would raise the impact fee significantly over, we are currently proposing a raise to the fees. The change to a level of service C would be much, much higher than what is being proposed.
Do you by any chance have that anywhere if?
Colin, do you?
What that cost would be?
I don't recall. Colin, did we ever do that evaluation to see what the change would be if it were, we did go with a level of service C?
Yeah, yeah. Good evening, Mayor. That's a great question. I, I don't have it on hand. It was significantly more. I think it was maybe two to three times higher than the maximum you're going to see tonight. And another concern would be committing to this high, high level of service that might be, you know, even logistically difficult to continue into the future when you think about maintenance and repair and staffing. And so the conservative approach got to a level with the fee revenue needed without being too aggressive with that adopted level of service.
Thank you for answering that. I appreciate it. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any other questions?
So here is the capital improvement plan. So the actual projects that are listed in the streets portion, the maximum supportable fee, we go from a thirty-four hundred dollars and twenty-one, thirty-four thou, three thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars, current fee on a single-family dwelling to four thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. And then on a multifamily unit from sixteen seventy-six to two thousand six hundred and ninety-six. And then on the retail and the other non-residential types, there are some that are higher, some lower. As you can see, a retail goes to nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-two. So as you can see, the, the discussion of going to a level of service C, that would significantly change the, the fee rate if we were to two to three times that. So just the, the check to make sure that we've stayed within what we need to for the calculations. And then this is the comparison for the other jurisdictions around. So Gem County has a very high one. We have the two highway district four, one for the Middleton Star area, one for the Caldwell Service area. And then we would, our new proposed fees would sit between those. So there's the, again, the maximum supportable fees. For the Fire Protection District, it goes through the same, same incremental expansion. They have changes based on the additional call data that they've done since the last study. Their breakdown looks at seventy percent to residential units and thirty percent to non-residential units. There is their proposed capital improvement plan. And, yeah. Then there are the draft fees for, for them. Their fees actually on the residential side go down. And then on the commercial side for the office, retail and institutional end up going up with the others going down. And so those, the comparison there, they go from kind of the bottom third to the, the top of the middle third with their proposed fees. And this is the comparison for a building permit in, in Nampa versus the other jurisdictions for a single-family and a thousand square foot of retail. So you can see we, our current fees have us placed at about fifth in the valley or fourth without us. And then this would put us up just below the city of Boise with our proposed impact fees. We did go and meet with the Snake River Builders Association and discussed the fees with them. They are aware of the proposed changes. They did not have any comments to ask for changes or any of that. They appreciated that we came and spoke to them. We are proposing that the ordinance would go into effect at the start of the year. That gives the builders plenty of time to get their current contracts through and the permitting that is needed there and plenty of time to plan for these increases. And with that, we'd stand for any questions?
Daniel, thank you. It's a lot of information and you've done a really good job walking through. We've had a number of meetings. Thank you very much. Counsel, do you have questions?
I do, just one, Mayor. So did the, did the impact fees for the fire and police, or not police, but the city of Napa go over this and approve it?
We did meet with the, the DFAC, the Development Impact Fee Committee, and they did review and recommend approval of these impact fees.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Are there any other questions? Yes.
And it appears that it went before the Napa Planning and Zoning Commission as well?
Correct. The, the adoption, or the, they look, they don't necessarily look at the fees themselves. They are looking at the adoption of the studies and the comprehensive plan amendments in that section. They are not necessarily looking at the fees in the planning commission.
But they recommended approval?
They did.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Daniel, thank you.
All right. And we have the, so we have two different motions. We have the comprehensive plan text amendment motion and then one for the ordinance for the changes to the ordinance to clarifying the roles of the fire district and the city as well as the implementation of the fees.
And we have two screens for those?
Yep. I've, I've got, this would be the, the first and then we can move over to the, I've got a motion to approve, deny, and then motion to approve and deny.
Okay. And I'm thinking we may just move or deny based on what you have on your screen if we can.
Yep, absolutely.
Yes, Councilman Bills?
So do you have one spreadsheet that covers the impact fees that shows total? So if somebody pulls a new permit January third, what their new fees are for parks?
So, so right here, this would be in this second column. If a single-family residential were to come in after the fees are implemented for impact fees, they would pay ten thousand ninety-four dollars for parks, streets, fire, police.
Okay. And that's in our packet?
Correct.
Okay.
It's, it's in the, our memo in the packet, yes.
Thank you. I just missed it. I couldn't find where the, the new numbers were hidden.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you. Any other questions for Daniel? Thank you, Daniel. Great job. Okay, so this is a public hearing.
Madam Mayor, we don't have anyone that signed up for public testimony, but we did have Bill Gilgra, Gilgra. He did sign up, so I'm not sure if he wanted to add additional information.
Bill, thank you. Are you online still? Did you?
Ma'am, excuse me. Mayor and members of the council, I can, I'll give you my name and who I represent to start with, and I'll try to make this very short, if that's okay.
That is great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My name is William F. Gilgra III. I'm with the firm of White Peterson, Gilgra and Nichols. I am appearing this evening as an attorney for the Nampa Fire Protection District. My address is 5700 East Franklin Road, Nampa, Idaho, Suite 200. I really appreciate the staff report that the mayor and councils received this evening and our thanks on behalf of my client and myself to all the work that your staff has put into this particular matter. I would say as a matter of summary that the reason why you are having these hearings tonight, of course, is not only to comply with the local land use planning act for the amendment of your comprehensive plan, but also to comply with the development impact fee law that provides that you have public hearings, not only for the amendment of the comprehensive plan, but also for the purpose of amendment of the, of your ordinance, the approval of the capital improvement plan. approval of the capital improvement plan, which is in a sense addition to just the amendment of the comp plan. And so you also will be considering new fees. So your hearing also addresses the hearing requirements, the Idaho state law, when you establish a new fee or you increase an existing fee. As far as the fire district is concerned, that new, it really is in a sense a new fee as has been explained by staff. The reasons why we are here today, in addition to the requirements of the state law, are the fact that, number one, in 2020, the Napa Fire Protection District annexed the city of Napa. And of course, that addresses the issue of why we have to have two separate development impact fees, those for the city of Napa and then those for the Napa Fire Protection District. There is also was an amendment of the advisory committee law in 2013 that said that the advisory committees were established by intergovernmental agreement between, in this instance, the city and the fire district. And we did complete that process by nominating the new committee under the new law, under your intergovern, new intergovernmental agreement with the fire district. And of course, they met with Colin McQueeney of Tischler Bice, which is presenting the updated capital improvement plan for the fire district, which is dated the 21st of February 2025. And there have been, of course, circumstances and changes within the fire district that are significant from its previous capital improvement plan. And then I would also advise the city council that we're going through this very same process with Canyon County. Their Planning and Zoning Commission has approved and recommended the amendment of the county's comprehensive plan, which of course will include the same capital improvement plan for the fire district that you are considering this evening. And they count, the Canyon County Commissioners will be taking up this matter, which is really the same issues, only on the county side for the unincorporated area within the fire district on August 20th, which will be next month. The language, of course, for the change in your capital or your comprehensive plan has been addressed. I would say that with regards to the ordinance, the main issues with the ordinance, of course, is, one is the Development Impact Fee Ordinance, which you have as Chapter 7 and Title 3 of your code. We are eliminating the city fire department impact fees and provide for the fire protection district impact fees. But the, the draft of the ordinance is intended so that you can maintain these impact fees in one ordinance, which is the, the general ordinance for impact fees for the city without having to have this either in two chapters or two different titles of your code. I would point out that the fire district's impact fee trust account, as it will be established, there's going to be one for the city's impact fees and one for the county's. And we'll continue to maintain those as separate items and separate trust accounts so they're not mixed up in the accounting process. We are amending, of course, the Development Impact Fee Schedules, which, with the up-to-date capital improvement plan, which of course those schedules are in your ordinance and have to be updated. And then the amendments of, to Chapter 17 of Title 2 have to do with the need to separate out the advisory committee of the city for the city's impact fees, since that's established through an ordinance of the city. And then to establish basically the process for the city of Napa, or the advisory committee for the Napa Fire Protection District, which of course is formed as the law in Idaho changed in 2023 by an intergovernmental agreement. And this provides for a section in your, in Chapter 17, Title 2 of your code to, so that reading the code, it can be easily recognized that that's how the advisory committee for the fire district is established. So those are just the overviews that I wanted to bring to your attention, and I will certainly stand for any questions you may have. And this is really a, a day that our district has really been looking forward to. This straightens out all of the issues associated with the fire district's impact fees and gets this fire district's impact fees separated as they should be from the cities. So thank you very much, and I'll stand for questions.
Bill, thank you. We do appreciate that explanation and your work. Counsel, do you have any questions for Bill? You did such a good job. There are no questions.
Well, I'm going to quit while I am ahead, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Which is hard for me to do sometimes.
Well, good job. Thank you so much. Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up? Is that it? Okay. Let me ask, Colin, did you have anything you wanted to say during the public time?
Mayor, no. Thanks for the opportunity, but no, I think Daniel and Bill just did a great job and thanks for every, everyone's time over there on the staff's end for this process and happy to get this underway and adopted.
Thank you. Is there anyone here this evening that had intended to testify on our impact fees? Yes. Good evening, Mark. Thank you for giving your name and address.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. My name is Mark Mitchell. Live at 12355 Landau Way, Napa, Idaho. Couple of questions I've got for this is the square foot on commercial, that puts us $1,000 per thousand square feet more than Boise, correct? So $1,000 per square foot more on retail? That seems like a lot if we want to bring retail to Napa. Snake River, Snake River Valley BCA and planning and zoning, I know it's a good share of planning and zoning of builders. I attended their meeting the other day. That's funny that they're okay with these fees because that was the first complaint they had about fees increasing. That surprises me they're okay with that because that's not what I've heard. What other fees are included? Because we're what, almost $11,000 for a building fee? Then we have a water hookup fee? Is that included in that? Power fee? Sewer fee? Are those all on top of the $10,000? So to build a brand new home, how much are we talking? 20, $30,000? $30,000 before we break ground? Okay, so that's 30 grand. Are we competitive with our neighboring cities at that? I mean, with this, we're competitive, but are we competitive in all the other ones? Are this fees the same in Boise for the power, water, sewer, trash? Or not trash, but power, water, sewer, gas, electric? Are we pricing ourselves out of the market in Napa with this? Please do not get me wrong. I know we need fees. I know we need police. I know we need fire, power, or fire department. If you don't have a good police department, you're not going to have a good community, bottom line. If you don't have good fire protection, it's slow response and you've got people complaining left and right. I understand all that, but these are my questions. Probably the one that's most frustrating is, it's an, is it LOS? Is that what it is on street more a C? And it'd be three, four, five times the cost to get to just B? What's our long-term plan to get to a B? Or do we have a plan for B or are we content with C? I, I know I hear that complaint more than any other complaint in the community. So we're talking $30,000 plus probably per home, per permit. We've got that. Does that include remodel if somebody wants to add on to their home? So we don't have the hookup fee, but we'll have the $10,000 fee?
No. That's new construction.
Only to the new construction.
Only to new construction?
They add on 400 square feet and it's based on 400 square feet.
Okay. And there's a square footage price for that?
I think there's, there's not, unresidential.
Okay. So it's not that I'm complaining, but that's the, that's the concern I'm hearing is, what are our neighboring, by the time it's all said and done, fees are fees. It doesn't matter if it's city water, it does not matter. And I apologize, I'm up on time. I do apologize. The thing is, is we've got to be somewhat competitive to have the right kind of neighborhood, but I understand we're also one of the faster growing ones. So those are my concerns. Anyway, I'll rest. Thank you.
Really appreciate those comments. Thank you very much.
Mayor, in regards to remodels or additions, our fees are not based, for residential, they are not based on square footage of the home. They are just by unit. So if a home does an addition, there are no additional impact fees charged to that home. On the commercial side, where they are based on square footage, if they do expand that, they do pay some additional incremental impact fees, but on the residential side, they do not.
Thank you. Daniel, I do want to ask you about the, this $1,000, $1,000 per 1,000 retail square feet. So that does significantly increase costs for retail. So can you speak to why, how we landed on that? I, I was there, but I need a reminder.
So the, the, they are all based on the capital improvement plan and then based on the, on the street side of things, they are based on the trip generation that a, in commercial or industrial retail generates. So the, a retail generates significantly higher trips than say a self-storage unit or a warehousing location, those types of things. And so it is really just based on those calls for service on the police and fire side, the trips on the streets. And then on the commercial side, commercial does not pay parks impact fees because they're not the, not the users.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And then as far as our, I'm going to just use the word equity with the other surrounding communities. Obviously, you shared that, so we're in keeping. We can't speak like tonight because this fee is directly related to impact fees. So we're right within that range with the other communities. The fee structure for the building department, those other fees, the hookup fees, come at a separate time in a separate hearing. And so at the time we do bring those forward, it'll be good to see what our comparisons are on the other, the hookup fees and all the different fees that are charged.
Generally speaking, I can, I can speak a little bit to that. Generally speaking, our connection fees are relatively comparable with other jurisdictions. We are the only jurisdiction in the valley, in the state, that charge impact fees on our utilities. And so there are some discrepancies there, but that was a choice that, you know, has helped us be able to fund some of the expansion projects that we need based on growth for, for our utility, utilities.
Our Purdum Drain is one of those, just for counsel. You probably all know that that Purdum Drain funding was important. It is, there's a considerable portion of that that is coming from the utility impact fee, which is very helpful for the Purdum Drain. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any further questions for Daniel?
Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Daniel, Bill mentioned that the county fees are going to be separate from the city fees?
The fire district fees are the same amount. That is just an accounting side of things where, from where they're collected. They will have separate funds, but they both play into the, the capital improvement plan that the fire department has brought forward.
And the county and the city are the same, same dollar amount?
Yes. They, they, we are not currently today, but once these fees are implemented by the city and by the county, they will be, someone who pulls a permit within the fire district, whether it's in the city or the county, will pay the same fire impact fee.
Will that be the same as police as well and streets?
So, no. The, the county does not collect police or streets impact fees unless they're within Highway District Number Four. They are, they have a impact fee that they are moving forward with. The other highway districts do not. And so that, they would not pay a streets, police, or parks fee if they're not within the city of Napa or another jurisdiction that charges that.
So I guess my question then is, should we at some point move forward with annexations for county properties within city limits? Would those properties then be subject to these city numbers?
If they, if they stay the way they are today with the existing homes that are there, no, we would not then gain impact fees from them. However, if they were to redevelop and add units or commercial or whatever, then yes, we would collect fees there. For the most part, when a project happens that is annexable and they are doing more than just lot splits or that kind of things, they, they tend to annex in because they need our utilities and so they have to annex in to do that. If there are projects, developments that happen outside of the city limits that are wanting to develop at a more city density, oftentimes what will happen is they'll go through the pre-annexation process. We will agree to serve them utilities and part of those agreements require them to pay impact fees, these, we substitute impact fees, even though they are not within the city, they, they would pay those fees. And so if there are larger developments that is in the county, that's oftentimes what happens if they're wanting city densities. If they're one acre parcels or that and just doing well in septic, then they would only pay those fire fees and highway district fees if they're in the applicable highway district.
And police fees?
The county does not charge any impact fees for police.
Okay. Thank you.
Or for sheriffs, for them in that case.
Are there any other questions for Daniel? And then after Mark spoke, I did not ask if there was anyone else that had intended to testify this evening. Is there anyone else that had intended to testify? Seeing none. I think at that, I would stand for a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This is an opportunity for counsel discussion and/or a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment and whatever it says there.
As stated.
As stated.
Yeah, thank you.
Whatever, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Comprehensive Plan Text as presented. Is there any discussion?
Mayor, I don't know if it's important to hear what Daniel says before we vote.
There's just two different actions tonight, just what he was saying. So this is the second action, but the first action is the one that we'll vote on first. So if there's no discussion, roll call.
Ngula.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
And this is the second motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending and what's stated on the screen.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Ngula.
Yes.
Phil.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel. Thank you, Bill and Colin, for being online. We appreciate your work. Thank you so much. And Colin, this is a heavy lift. You've done a good job. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, and thanks to the council and staff.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. I think we're going to go ahead and move, we'll take a break after this next public hearing. This is our last public hearing this evening. It's 8:4 on the agenda. It is an action item. It's a zoning map amendment from two-family duplex residential to single-family residential zoning district and a potential development agreement for a .26 parcel. This is at 1423 South Elder Street for Celia Herrera. The original concept is a zoning map amendment for a building and additional, an addition to an existing home. Is our applicant here this evening? Good evening. Thank you for waiting. And go ahead and share your name and address again. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Celia Herrera. My address is 1423 South Elder, Napa. And I'm just here to hear the approval. And I'm just here to hear the approval or denial for the rezoning that I applied like a month ago. And just for rezoning from RD to RS6, I'm planning to make an addition in my house. And it's, I mean, about it, I mean, just very simple. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Council, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do, Mayor. Celida, you're just trying to make a remodel, right?
An addition for like a couple extra rooms.
Yes, that's all you're trying to do, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As you have been watching this evening, we will have you come back. We'll have staff, public hearing, and then we'll have you come back for any last questions.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So hang tight and we'll move over here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, Rodney Ashby, planning and zoning director. Okay, so I think we can move through this pretty quickly. Planning and zoning commission did recommend approval as was presented in the staff report on May 13th. So the current zoning is primarily RD, but it does include a small portion of the property that's RS6, which is a little strange, but it does happen over time. Older properties have had this happen. The owner wishes to construct an addition onto the dwelling but keep it as single-family residential. But since the primary zoning district is RD, the property size is limited to 10,000 square feet for a single-family detached dwelling unit. The RS6 zoning district allows a maximum lot size of 12,000 square feet and the property is 11,506 square feet. The rezone will clean up the property with RS6 zoning standards applying to the whole property. So here's the comp plan, medium-density residential. You can see how, I'll zoom in a little bit closer there. The RD zoning takes up a majority of this property with the RS6 on the southern portion. Utilities are available to the site. There's an aerial view of it. So this is just the applicable regulations about rezoning when you need to clean up that property. So this is the requirement to rezon here. And then the lot sizes for the RD and the RS6 zones. The setbacks and sizes. The criteria for zoning map amendment, as you've heard these lots of times before, but these are them that we have to find that each of these are met. Nampa Development Engineering gave their comments and some specific conditions that I put in as recommended conditions. And here are the facts. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. It's right, the zoning is aligned with the comprehensive plan. It's right next to RS6 zoning. It's compatible with the existing properties around it. And it'll allow them to do some, to expand their home. Here's the conclusion. This is in your staff report. I'm happy to read it, but I think we all know what the situation is here. Here are the proposed conditions. Those are all in your staff report. And then a couple of motions for your consideration.
Rodney, thank you. Council, do you have any questions for Rodney before we move to public hearing? Thank you. None and? Mayor, no one signed up for public testimony on this item. Is there anyone here that intended to testify on this particular subject this evening? Seeing none. I'd like to ask our applicant. Council, do you have any questions for our applicant before we close public hearing? And do you have any further comments that you would like to make before we close?
No, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you. Council, I would stand for a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, what is the rule of council?
Madam Mayor. I move to approve the project as shown on the screen for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ngula.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Hills.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you for waiting this evening. You are good to go. Stay in touch and thank you for waiting all evening. Thank you very much. We do have several items yet to go this evening. I would like to suggest we take about a five or so minute break before we come back together to finish our new business items. So we'll be on break. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Rodney, I think as we resume, we're going to go to staff communications and we'll let you go first.
Thank you, Mayor Councilman. We got a couple of consent agenda items for planning and zoning this last meeting.
The first one was a subdivision short plat for Adara, number one. That's a, it was recommended for approval and then it was on the consent agenda for you tonight. Subdivision, the second one was a subdivision preliminary plat, one-year extension for Middlebury South. This is near the northwest corner of Midway Road and Orchard Avenue. And this was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then the public hearings, we did have one withdrawn and that'll come back at a different date. So we did have just five others. The first one was the adoption of the downtown implementation plan and the comprehensive plan text amendment to include the summary of the downtown implementation plan. And that was recommended for approval and that will come before you on the 18th of August. The next one was a conditional use permit for home occupation gun-related sales and service at 7654 East Lightfoot Street. And this was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. Next one was a conditional use permit for a barbershop expansion for an existing barbershop in the downtown at 115 13th Avenue South. And they're just expanding significantly. Their business was doing really well and they needed more space. And so that one was approved by Planning and Zoning Commission. Next one was an annexation and zoning for Brentwood Village. This is at the southeast corner of Eustac Road and North Franklin Boulevard. This one is, let's see, I think I have the numbers here. RS4 zoning to create 24 single-family lots and maintain access easement to the cell tower that's existing on the property. And that was recommended for approval and that will come before you on the 18th of August as well. And then finally, there was a development agreement modification for Home Base. This is the property across from Amazon on Franklin. And it came before you for a variance for parking. And they needed to adjust their development agreement at your request. And so that one was approved, or recommended for approval and that will also come before you on the 18th.
Appreciate that Rodney, thank you so much. Okay, so we have already done 5-1 and 5-2, we're ready now for 5-3 on the new business agenda. This is an action item. It's to authorize the Senior Director of Public Works to sign the Federal Railroad Administration Form accepting the grant for Robinson Boulevard and Greenhurst Road Railroad Crossing Overpass. It's the rail crossing elimination project and that is in the amount of $1,522,250. Would you like Crystal to come forward? Does anybody have any questions?
I'll just make a motion.
I have a question.
I have a question.
Is there a city match? I didn't see it.
Thank you, Crystal. Yes, there is, which is why it is on. I don't have my computer opened up.
Mayor, Councilman Haverfield, good question. There is a city match on this. So the total grant amount is for $1.52 million. 312 of that are what I'm calling city match, but we're sharing that 50/50 with the Nampa Highway District. So our total burden cost is $151,225.
Basically about 10%.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes.
Need a little help because, so we're taking a million-two grant and then we're adding money to it, to entities. And I'm trying to determine what's the million-five going to do for us before we get on down the pathway. My concern is, I'm looking at, which I appreciate you putting on, is the final design and then the actual construction. So trying to see if it's going to be reachable to even get to the end game.
Mayor, Councilman.
Then I have a follow-up question for you in a moment.
Okay, hopefully it's an easy one. Mayor, Councilman Bills, so this is a bite out of the apple and I wanted to give you the entire apple cost to be transparent because this is an expensive bridge to put in there and it includes two intersections. So this will get us eventually a bridge roundabout and a signal. So both sides of the fence will be happy on this one. This specific grant gets us through the environmental clearances, most of the public outreach, or at least some of it, and probably around 60 to 70% design. It doesn't get us all the way to final design. There'll be about another million dollars in design costs associated with that. What the big part of this grant gets us is eligibility for the next phase of this grant. The next phase that we could apply for and we'd have to compete would include final design and all-in construction cost. There's a 20% match on that. But again, Nampa Highway District has been partnering with us to share that 20%, so our cost would probably be around 10% of that.
So then, the grant and the study and the design, is it involve traffic counts and delay times and those type of issues? Does that come into play?
Absolutely. So this is actually phase three of this project. So the first phase, we partnered with Nampa Highway District to do a concept analysis. So that gave us the traffic counts, the traffic design that gave us the estimated layout that we wanted to do, as well as, like I said, concept. So not quite preliminary, but somewhere around like 25, 30% of that. And then we received a compass grant, which was a zero match on that one. That got us through the environmental and starting the public outreach. So we got a website built on that. And then this grant will get us the next step, up to like 60, 70% design, continued public outreach, environmental clearance is done, then make us eligible for final design and construction.
So final question, Mayor, is how about right-of-ways? Are we already talking to landowners or do we totally wait till it's a condemnation situation? What's the plan there?
So the, this intersection slash intersections is what it will become, is technically in our impact area, but not within our city limits yet. Nampa Highway District has already started procuring the right-of-way for this at no additional cost to us. The largest impacted property owner has already been purchased.
So they're in motion on things then?
That's correct.
Because I'm assuming we've got to kind of move the intersection in order to physically.
That's correct. We have to move it to the, to the south to get it farther away. It's about 75 feet right now from the rail crossings, so there's no way to keep the intersection there and elevate that. It will still be a large roundabout in the air. It will be very elevated in order to get the grades associated with that, but it'll be further south.
Thank you very much.
Roundabout in the air?
Whoa, I see that.
Sounds like fun.
We are innovative, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
We can make, we can move mountains or create them, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion for a roundabout in the air. Authorize Senior Director of Public Works to sign the Federal Railroad Administration Grant.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Roll call. Bills?
Yes.
Reynolds? Haverfield?
Yeah.
Jinguula?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. That's great, I love it.
That was funny.
So 5-4 is an action item. It's to authorize the mayor to sign the state local agreement for the Middleton Road, State Highway 55 to Flamingo Avenue project. This is for construction. It's key number 24229 in the amount of $5,807,660.
Moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, discussion? Roll call. Jinguula?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Haverfield?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. If you don't mind, I'd like to come back to 5-5 on the agenda and go ahead and keep moving down some of these other things that need to be quickly accomplished. 5-6 is an action item. It's to authorize the planning and zoning staff to initiate a zoning text amendment and associated public hearings for the consideration of new language requiring new subdivisions provide larger parcels where lots abut older large lot county subdivisions with existing dwellings. And Councilman Bills?
Thank you, Mayor. So councilors, soon after the adoption of the Southwest Area Plan, Rodney set a meeting, was able to visit with himself and planning and zoning staff and talk about, one of the things that I kept hearing from several individuals was the aspect of, and people who came and testified, some of them were on one-acre lots, some were on three-acre lots, had built large residences plus possibly an outbuilding or motorhome garage or some other type of ancillary property. And some of the communication that we had to ourselves that got passed was the aspect that those folks were feeling like they built several years ago in the county. They had elbow room and the Southwest Area Plan would allow for land next to them to get developed at an RS4, RS6 type density. So what I was discussing with staff and wanted you to consider is that in that Southwest Area Plan, that we would come back with amendment language that would say that if we're abutting an existing, so I want to separate between an existing development and a proposed development. So an existing development that, in that particular area, we would go greater than what's currently in code and so we would allow that the subdivision would go in. So potentially if you had 50 lot subdivision going in, the lots that would be abutting the existing one-to-three acre home sites with houses and outbuildings on there. That size of lot in the new plat would be required to be at least at the 40,000, just under an acre type size. So then those folks who have an acre or three acre, they're not looking at five houses abutting their property. They're now looking at one or maybe a one and a half. Across the street, further interior to the new project, then the lots would go down to the 20,000 level. And so there'd still be, they're not looking further out and immediately seeing six rooftops out their patio, that there'd still be a transition. So if, the reason I wanted to try to implement this a few months ago was decisions being made by those who are in the development side and who would be proposing some plats against their. They would have knowledge that there needs to be a change-up and what that change-up means to them as they would propose any future plats to us. Then once you're past that transition road, then you would be back to whatever the zone is, RS8, 7, 6, as far as size of lots and layout. Then you have a transition to those. And my thinking is it's with the existing large home sites and that that would help in several instances when we went through those hearings. Had we maybe already had this in play, it may have helped a few people who said, wow, I'm totally opposed to this because now I could be looking at four or five houses out my back door or my back area. And this would allow for people to transition. The portion that, and the other reason I wanted to see us try to get something like this adopted relatively soon was, so our plan in place, possibly this revision in place, somebody goes and buys a piece of property and says, well, I'm going to put in five lots. So it's five one-acre lots or five, you know, two-and-a-half acre lots. And they carve up, you know, 10 to 15 acre parcel. If that plat goes to the county after our adoption of the Southwest Area Plan and potentially this amendment, then coming up against their property is not a requirement to go to this type of spacing. In other words, they've had the opportunity to look and see, if I'm buying 12, 15 acres and I'm going to build four or five acreage sites, they should know that potentially somebody could come in and have standard residential against them. So it's not for the community who has bought and/or tied up ground and they're pre-planning their plats and then somebody comes in and says, oh, there's 12 acres there and I'm putting in these large lots and now I want you to give me this big buffer space. And potentially we could have already approved a preliminary plat. So it's really first-in-time, first-in-line type approach. And so those who have been there for several years, they get some protection. And I feel like that was one of the issues we didn't address very well or deal with during that time. But those who come thereafter, they're already aware. Somebody has a plat already approved, it's an RS6, RS7 plat. And so then they make their own economic decision to put in acreage against higher-density plats. So that was my request to try to get something before us and still possibly deal with that. I think this concept should also be used as we go through the next two to three years of comp plan change is implementing some type of transitional language. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that explanation. Council, do you want, do you have discussion?
Mayor Kling?
Yes.
Great idea. I think that's, that's a start. But I think on the Southwest Area Plan specifically, I think there's going to be community input in this. And for me to go forward without community input, I can't support this yet. But I think it's a start in the right direction.
So this action tonight, and I was just rereading it to make sure I understood it, basically this is just authorizing the planning and zoning staff to initiate the zoning text amendment, but it has to have a public hearing with it. So we would have to have, but I think, are you saying that you want to have this discussion later in the comp plan process?
Yes.
Or, you are, okay. And I think if I understood correctly, Councilman Bills was wanting to go ahead and move this forward because in this next year to two years while we're working on it, there are people that are going to be coming in and it would be setting the expectation so they know it now. If they're out buying property that they know that they're not going to be able to have RS6 houses next to this, these acre lots. They're going to have to have large lots, which then impacts the cost, right? Because they're not going to generate the same revenue, so.
No, I think it's a good start, Mayor, I do. But I, I can't, I think, thought we were going to put together a group that was going to go over this stuff and we're already implementing something that they probably have no idea about yet. So I thank David for coming up with this idea, but I want to wait.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve 5-6. I guess I won't say anything then.
Well, you can have discussion after the motion.
A second, so you can speak.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded and now.
I think from, for years now, we've been looking at lot compatibility as a part of our decision-making process to make sure that compatibility was arrived at in especially mixed-use type layouts like this where there's larger lots with smaller lots. So I, I go along with Victor in a sense. I know that we've got nine different meetings set up for comp plan review, allowing town halls to take place, people to come forward, express their concerns. I think it's important, as Victor said, that the community has a chance to be involved. I think moving forward with conversation about zoning tax amendments is, you know, that's fine, but I think it needs to be in a larger context of, of review and involvement of others with the comp plan changes that we're talking about. So I'm not sure I agree with there needing to be anything tonight other than, like you say, maybe a public hearing, but is that in addition to the nine that are already listed? Or would it be one of those nine?
Nine?
Comp plan, as far as regarding the comp plan specifically with the Southwest Area Nampa.
Well, this, this is a separate action, but it is required to have a public hearing. So there would be a public hearing associated with it.
Would it be in addition to the nine that are already listed? Amy can provide us with that.
Oh, that is different. This is different than that. This is not, this is not part of the comp plan and those, all of those meetings that are scheduled. This is a public hearing for this action item specifically.
I thought David said specifically to the Southwest Area of Nampa, that conversation. So is this on the east side of town, south side of town as well?
This is actually.
I, what I tried, when I sat down within a few days after the plan was approved three or four months ago with staff, I was trying to get, while it was on the mind, so to speak, to go back and make that, make this type of a modification to the Southwest Area Plan.
Okay, so it is specific to?
So it's to that issue. It's not to the 2050 comprehensive plan that's going to take place the next three years. I was trying to address a lot of the comments from folks who have the one-to-three acre. There's, there's a handful of subdivisions out there that were put in over the last 10, 12 years, maybe even longer. And so you have those groups and they were very upset with the Southwest Area Plan because it was going to allow RS4, RS6 to come in against their three-acre site.
Right.
And so what I was trying to encourage was an amendment to the Southwest Area Plan to give some transitional space to those existing projects within that planned area. So we're here at mid-July. It'd make more sense if we were here in April, May, you know, soon after. So this has nothing to do unless this type of concept gets added into the 2050 in three years. But this was simply to address those concerns and to give anybody who's working on the plat that transition. So when that plat comes and the neighbors who come say, I've got a three acre, I'm valued at a million-two-fifty and you're going to stick five, you know, 1,600 square footers behind me, I don't think that's appropriate. I'm trying to pre-address those issues.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, with Steel Falls, we had a similar condition where there were larger lots and smaller lot, the patio homes that were looking to be developed behind them. So yeah, I think you're, you're spot on. The only other thing I was going to say is if you do need help with drafting, let me know. I'll take care of drafting.
In my opening remarks, being late of the hour this evening, I mentioned this, I meant to say that my drafting skills do not match Mr. Haverfield's and drafting skills.
Thank you. Okay, so there is a motion on the table and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Rodriguez?
No.
Bills?
Yes.
Haverfield?
I'm going to pass on this one, no.
Jinguula?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
All in favor, to oppose, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, 5-7 is an action item. It's to authorize the mayor to sign the utility relocation cost agreement between the Idaho Power Company and the City of Nampa for the Eustac Road. for the Eustach Road widening, Villas Canal to Oahu Storm Avenue project in the amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rodriguez.
Just one second. Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Yes.
Jangula.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Five, eight and five, nine are both a first reading of ordinance. And they will both be requested to pass under suspension of rules. Five, eight is an ordinance and approval of publication and the ordinance summary expanding the boundaries of the municipal irrigation district of the City of Nampa by inclusion of the real properties contained in Exhibit A.
In accordance with the City of Napa, Idaho, annexing a portion of the underlying irrigation district into the municipal irrigation district of the City of Napa County, Idaho. And changing the boundaries thereof, allowing for a summary of this ordinance to be published and directing the city engineer to alter the use and area map accordingly. Providing for recordation, providing for severability, providing effective date, repealing all ordinances, resolutions, orders or parts thereof in conflict herewith.
Madam Mayor, I move this pass under suspension of rules.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Yes.
Jangula.
Reynolds.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Five, nine is an action item. It is the first reading of ordinance amending Napa City Code Title Eight, Chapter Five, Section Four pertaining to Water and Sewer Regulations. And again, it is requested to pass under suspension of rules.
In accordance with the City of Napa, Idaho, amending certain chapters of the Napa City Code, including amending Title Eight, Chapter Five, Section Four, Napa City Code. Pertaining to Water and Sewer Regulations, providing for an effective date, providing for severability, allowing for a summary of this ordinance to be published. And repealing all ordinances, resolutions, orders and parts thereof in conflict herewith.
May I make a motion to pass under suspension of rules?
Second.
It's been moved.
Discussion?
Yes.
So I've got notes here that I want to make sure that we're changing those water and sewer regulations cross-connect. So what's the procedure? How's it going to get implemented? That the designers and other people are all familiar with what is now changed and projects that are being designed and in motion? How does this implement?
Are we on five, eight or five, nine?
Five, nine.
Okay. Mayor, this and Councilwoman Bills, this all goes through the plan review process in the Building Department. And so we will put out a bulletin that notifies the design community that the, of the change. As well as then it will be commented on in their plan reviews.
Okay, so they know to start implementing something different or projects that are in motion?
Correct.
Has this already been discussed with the design community or?
So the, the city ordinance has been more restrictive, required more than the plumbing code. And so this brings it into alignment where plumbing code is the guiding document. And we are not requiring more than the plumbing code. And so, yeah, it's, it will be an easy implementation for the, those people that are changing. It'll just be a call out that shows a double check rather than a RP device.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Bills, this, this language is spot on with what will be good for our city.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any further, yes?
Daniel, so from the design community side. We currently, on any new project, have a backflow assembly required. The double back check, is that what's unique about this change?
So, so Mayor, Councilman Haverfield, yes. Currently, our code, our ordinance requires a reduced pressure backflow assembly. This will just change it down to what the plumbing code requires, which is a double check.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Jangula.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Five, ten is an action item. This is to authorize the Public Works Staff to reallocate a million dollars in funds from the Midland Boulevard Corridor Preservation Project to the Eustach Corridor for right-of-way preservation.
Move.
It's been moved and seconded, yes.
So is there a way to know how much has been spent on Midland and is that lost? Or is that just set aside for the moment? And? Just trying to see, well, Midland Corridor is an important issue far as getting people north-south. And so we're going to set aside and use for something else, I just kind of want to know.
You're correct. Mayor, Councilman Bills, that's a great question. So this, typically in the past, Nampa didn't do corridor preservation in this scale and capacity. When we did the Midland Corridor Study, we knew that we needed to improve five, six miles of, of Midland. And it was going to be expensive because they're built out, so just being honest here. When we do corridor widensings like this, we typically do the intersections first and then we connect the dots in between them. So currently under design is our first intersection on Midland, at Midland and Greenhurst in the FY twenty-six budget, which hopefully will get adopted next month. We have Midland Smith and Midland Davis, so we're still moving forward with all of the planned improvements in there. Eustach also is an important corridor to us and just based on, so when I was hedging my bets and I said I needed to pick a corridor. I picked the one that I thought was going to be a little bit more expensive and would have some time to build out. With other developments coming in, Eustach has gained more traction. And so I believe this money would be better spent right now on Eustach. We will still plan on widening both corridors, we're still investing in both corridors. It's just the better bang for the buck right now is for us to spend it on Eustach.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Sorry, my mic wasn't on, any other questions? I will say it's so nice to have a beautiful, educated, experienced smile facing us, yes. It is the best. Thank you, Crystal. Okay, roll call.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Haverfield.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Jangula.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
At this time, we're going to move back to five, five on the agenda. This is an action item and it was a request to consider, it's really a discussion item. But it's to request the Board of Canyon County Commissioners place an advisory ballot question on the November twenty-twenty-five ballot election.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we move this to the August eleventh meeting. And then have a discussion of either advisory ballot question or a tax levy override. Possibility to fund the Idaho Center deferred maintenance. That, that would be earmarked for funding the Idaho Center deferred maintenance.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move this discussion item to August the eleventh. For this question or to consider if needed a levy override discussion at that time.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
I think this is for precedent, so please excuse. We're dealing with two subjects, two topics right now in this motion. The levy override, which I don't know anything about yet, to discuss. And then now we're discussing the planning over that at our public hearing. For moving forward with the conveyance, that's what the object is. So wouldn't that be better to have two motions on this? Or do, or what? I'm just confused here.
So this is not about the conveyance, though. So this is not a motion.
Well, we're having a hearing on the conveyance.
We're having a hearing on the conveyance, yes.
Okay, so that's what, that's what I was referring to, Mayor, so.
And for clarity, just for char, it is not, we're, we're doing a town hall rather than a public hearing.
Oh, we are.
It's a town hall rather than a public hearing. So there won't be a public hearing that night. So no decisions will be made that night on conveyance because it's strictly a town hall.
I see.
But it could include a special meeting for this action item to be moved, to have a discussion about a advisory question. Or a question on a levy override.
Okay, so get back to my question on the levy override. What information do you have, Dale, to go forward with this? How much, process? I'm confused here.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Rodriguez, so the, I don't have any information on, on dollars. I know that we have a lot of deferred maintenance on the Idaho Center that we're going to have to figure out how to fund if, if we choose to keep it. And this opens up an option for us to have a discussion surrounding how we would fund that with a levy override. And/or if we just want to put it on the ballot as an advisory ballot. So that's all it does and, and part of it stems from my questions that I have for the Secretary of State about what we can do for that to be on a ballot. And I don't have those answers and I think that we need to have those answers in place before we vote on this. And then have a, a robust discussion around that.
And Mayor, if I may, on that point, yeah, you can get there either way with combining it one motion or splitting it two. It's really just a request for a discussion item, it's not a binding decision, it's more of a, you know, a discussion topic. If there were to be two, I would, because they have two different legal standards, I would advise for whatever agenda they go on, be it August eleventh or whatever. Just break those out and make it explicit. But either way, you can, you, there's no real procedural roadblocks to get there with the proposed motion.
So as I understand the motion, it's basically to defer this decision tonight to August the whatever.
Yes.
Has nothing to do with the other, the other would just maybe be a, a topic that could be added. Since it's not listed as far as as a discussion item on this action.
That'd be right.
That is correct, yeah.
Yes, I get that. But you said one word that I don't like, override. So I'll, 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 I think when you discuss it, it might be a good, if it's a forum, sure, I think that's a good idea, but why?
So we're not voting on whether, you know, we're not voting on that. All we're doing is deferring this discussion to August eleventh at this time. Okay?
Mayor.
I, 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 I want to make sure that we have clarity that we're discussing an advisory ballot question. But we're also wanting on the agenda to discuss a override levy question. Because I, I see based on issues that have come out in the last five to ten days. It may be appropriate that we ask the public for an override levy, as opposed to just an advisory.
And that's what this discussion will do? Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, I, hang on just a second. Councilwoman Jangula was next and then we'll go to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Rodriguez, I don't want to speak on behalf of Councilman Reynolds. But I think what he was, what he's trying to do by this is just, rather than just put it on the ballot so that it's optional for people to vote whether they want to keep it or not. It puts a little bit of skin in the game in the sense of saying, yes, I want my taxes potentially to increase if that's necessary for us to maintain this building. So I think.
Jangula, I understand completely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Kling.
And Councilman Griffin.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, he was next and then we'll come back. Councilman Griffin?
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand logistically, if we put on our August eleventh hearing or town hall a potential discussion item for a levy override, how much time do we need to be able to get a levy override on the ballot? Is that our intention to have it on the November ballot? Because I look at these as two separate issues. For, for purposes of the town hall and everything else, I think it's important that we have the exploratory vote or whatever we're calling it in November. We're going to have our town hall, then we're going to have public perception in November based off of that. And then based off of the public perception, who knows which direction we go with the transfer of the Idaho Center. I don't foresee that based off the town hall feedback that we move forward with a levy override vote. Because that's not really, in my mind, proper order of events. We have the town hall, it may be this exploratory vote. And if we end up retaining the Fort Idaho Center, then in May, we're going to need a levy override. Because we're ultimately, however we land on the vote, going to be deciding how to maintain the facility that we're retaining. Or it's going to be CWI's discussion for them. And we don't need to discuss a levy override because either way, it's either going to them or it's staying with us. So I just, for me, in the sense of a levy override, I think we're putting the cart way in front of the horse. We can discuss that at that town hall and I think there'll be more transparency there, I appreciate that. But I'm just trying to think logistically, are we thinking November we're putting this as an override levy action item? Or May of next year during the Republican primary?
If it were going to be put in place for FY twenty-seven, the vote would need to really take place in November. If you wait till May, you've missed, you're way late in your budget process. So by doing it in November, you actually know how to begin budgeting for FY twenty-seven. Otherwise, you're, you're not even having a vote until you're almost done putting your budget together in FY twenty-seven. And it would actually, I, I could let Natalie or Councilwoman Jangula restate what she just shared because she just spoke to what you just shared about.
And, and I heard that, I think where I'm having some confusion is we haven't decided what we're going to do with the Fort Idaho Center. If we put, if we put a levy override in November, we're basically saying, you know, we're, we're, we're going to retain it, all the work that we've done with CWIs for not. And we're moving forward with keeping it, we're allocating now a levy override.
Actually. I'll let Dale answer that and then Councilman Haverfield's next.
Madam Mayor, so the intent of my motion is to talk about both issues of either advisory vote or a levy, levy override, not both, it's got to be one or the other. So a levy override discussion that can, should happen after we get some more information, in my opinion. There's, there's a lot of what ifs with, with that discussion. With, if we choose to vote for a, to put it on a ballot for a levy override. That if, and, and November, and that came back as a negative. People need to be aware of what, where we're at, what we're up against and what it's going to cost. And if they come back and say, no, we don't want that, then we could continue on with a vote to convey or not to convey after we have that information. But if we do a advisory vote and then another vote, it doesn't make sense. We have to make up our mind, in my opinion, one or the other. And that's what this discussion on the eleventh would be. We would make up our minds as a council to say, we want one or the other, advisory vote. Or talk about the reality of where we're at with funding and lack of funding for the Idaho Center. And do we want to put it on the ballot for a levy override, yes or no? So that's basically what it amounts to.
I have another question after Councilman Haverfield.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Haverfield?
Well, with all due respect, we have our opinions. We can agree to disagree. I don't agree with the premise that a levy overrides the only way to fund the Idaho Center, that's my personal belief. I have a different path to be able to provide the, the funding necessary. So the idea that we have to have it be a levy override or nothing else is, I don't agree with. So I won't be supporting the motion. I think that we can go ahead and move forward with a, a vote tonight to allow the people to speak in November as an advisory, non-binding vote to give us some direction from them. Then at that point, move forward if we choose to retain the Idaho Center. We can go down and, and I would be more than happy to share concepts that I've already put in place in my own mind. But nothing that's been public, obviously.
Councilman Griffin?
So I, I think I have three questions, but we'll just go one at a time so I don't overwhelm. My first being, if we did a levy override vote in November, are we bound by that vote to come up with that money and collect from the taxpayer? If they vote fifty-one percent, yes, on a levy override of twenty-eight million dollars for the deferred maintenance over however many years. Are we bound by that vote or can we just get that as an exploratory vote and then say, well, you know, we got a no on that. So we're going to decide to do something else or yeah, we got a yes on that. But we don't want to do it, actually, we're going to just end up giving it to CWI anyway. I just, the idea, I need to know logistically, if a levy override vote is cast and it is in the affirmative, are we bound to those dollars to use in levy?
So, Councilman Griffin, I'm going to pause right there, move, so I would add. So I would ask our legal counsel to please not answer it today, but write that down. And part of the reason why we would be pushing this discussion to a later date is to have time to do the research and get the answer to the questions so that we have the answer to that question before we act on a, an advisory vote for us to fully explore the other and understand what that process might be and what we need to do. So that's the intent, and so Preston will capture your questions, and then we'll address those and get back to you. Okay, question number two.
Question number two, A, and then two B. They're not, it's not a third question, they fall together. My first being, when is the deadline to get this onto the ballot for November? And that can be one that Preston writes down, or I, I kind of would like to know the answer to that now.
It's end of August. I don't know the exact date, but it's the same timeframe, it's the end of August?
My preference then would be that we don't overwhelm ourselves on August 11th. I have a feeling it's going to be an extremely long night of testimony to then chalk this up. I would prefer that we did it at our next council meeting on the 20th or whatever it may be.
18th?
The 18th, that's, that's fine, because then we're able to digest how we felt about the town hall discussion, and then reflect and discuss on the 18th and still have time to decide whether we want to do an exploratory, non-binding vote or an over, a levy override. That would be my preference.
Thank you for that. Did you have an, another question?
Nope, that's it. Two B, is Councilman Reynolds okay with having it on August 18th rather than on the 11th? I guess would be my third question.
I would be fine with that.
So your motion, you would be willing to amend your motion to the 18th and the second? Were you the second?
Well, clarity. How do, how do you get the information? It seems like the information session, there's people making comments, but information backs, so it seems like the idea should be available on the 11th of a possible override.
We could certainly...
And, and formal vote not take place until the meeting of the 18th, but it's, somehow it needs to...
We could certainly discuss it on the 11th.
Correct. But the vote would take place on the 18th.
I would agree with that, too.
Say, say again, Councilman?
I, I'm completely okay with having the information presented to us on the 11th. I just would prefer not to have a formalized vote until the 18th, but I'm one of six. So if we want to decide on the 11th, that's up to y'all. I just, I think we can get the information on the 11th, hear the commentary at the town hall, and then make a final decision on the 18th. But I think you're spot on. We should know the process, know what we're up against, have those numbers to reflect on them, and then decide on the 18th.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Who's going to provide that information?
Our legal counsel will get the information, and we'll push that out to all council members. Yes?
Yep, duly noted.
Thank you.
Mayor, just for transparency reasons, since this was noticed as a public hearing, can we just state the, the change? No?
It's, we, on, on this current agenda, under the consent agenda, we noticed it as a town hall.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
One, one clarification, Mayor. Okay, on the request, the Board of County, Canyon County Commission would place an advisory ballot question on the November. Why do we, why are we talking now about an override?
Well, I'll, I'll share my thoughts, because after sitting through the three sessions last week, discussing, you know, where the mayor and president accepted questions, and then people making comments thereafter, from my side, it's easy to say the city of Napa should keep the facility. But to date, I don't know if people are grasping the dollar deferred maintenance and the liability that is before us financially. And so, just like our roads and sidewalk improvements, et cetera, we put together an override levy and put it before the voters last year, and they said no. So that told me that they were comfortable with bumpy roads and lack of sidewalks. So in my mind, when the public is posed with the question to, are you in favor of an override levy to help on the deferred maintenance of the Idaho Center and the capital improvements that are needed, and it's X millions of dollars, and it will cost you Y dollars per year for that override, then that has more oomph in terms of the public saying, yeah, we should keep this, and I'm willing to help support keeping this. Or, oh, gosh, that could add X dollars to me to keep this facility? I, I hardly ever go, or I go every year. Whatever the issue is for individuals, I just think an advisory ballot is a simple, yeah, keep it. I think an override levy brings a lot more energy to the issue and communicates, just like last year on the, on the road issue. So that's, that was my thinking on the issue.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that, David. But what, what today is, when I come and I look at this, place an advisory, advisory ballot question on the November election ballot, now we're talking an override levy. So that's not mentioned here. That's one thing I'm saying, you're, now you're throwing more at me that you have no basis to give me any solid information other than we're just going to do this. It's, it's just a rush of decision, I call it.
Well, we're not, we're not voting on the ballot.
I know. I, I understand that. I'm saying if you're going to discuss it, if you're going to put a levy override on this, it should have had it on there so people would know. That's all I'm saying. I, I don't disagree with you. No, I'm just saying it should have been listed as that. That's all.
Well, it went through my mind based on the communication the last seven days.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, no.
And so I thought this would be a good subject to have on there, and I think it's a good subject to discuss.
Well, I probably should have said advisory ballot, A, conveyance or not, B, levy override, whatever, and however else. That's just what I'm saying. Now the community's looking at that going, well, that's not, where does a levy override go? What is, what's all about that? That's one thing I'm saying.
I think it'll come up at the next meeting on the 11th.
I know that, David.
There'll be a vote thereafter.
I know that. I'm just saying it should have been on the, on the information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So is there any further discussion? Excuse me, my mic was off. Is there any further discussion on this item? Roll call.
Madam Mayor, could I just ask for clarification? Based on the discussion, it, it appears that we are still moving the item to August 11th, but with a formal vote on August 18th.
Yes.
To have discussion on the advisory ballot as well as the levy override.
That's correct.
On the, on, yes. Thank you. Rodriguez?
I'm going to say no, until we get more information, until we get the better documents proving and showing the wrongs and the goes, the pros and cons.
Jangula?
The community can hear it.
Jangula?
Yes.
Haverfield?
No.
Griffin?
Yes.
Bills?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
For in favor to oppose motion carries? Okay, so now we are going to move to the last new item business, a new item, excuse me, the last item on our new business discussion, which is 511. This is an action item, and this is to authorize the mayor to negotiate an extension of the Animal Shelter Services Agreement, actually to September 30th with West Valley Humane Society with a not-to-exceed amount to be determined by council. In the packet, I did forward the proposed extension, which was August 31st, with a dollar amount as was on there. So this is, you can either authorize me to move forward with that or to, to negotiate something. So I'd like to ask what the will of the council is.
Mayor, my thought is that we not exceed what was in our budget proposal. And if the Humane Society is willing to move forward with that for two months to get more time to work out issues, that's great. If not, why then we'll work on a new plan? Would be my thinking, under what's required by city code, et cetera. But I don't, as stated last Thursday, I don't appreciate the massive increase and Napa being fingered for more animals than what may actually be under our purview. And I appreciated what was brought up from the bench last Thursday during the budget session, that zip codes and physical residing in, in a city do not match. And the city of Napa gets counted for a whole lot more population than, than what is physically within our city boundaries. And so I think the numbers are skewed, and I, I just think we're subsidizing other entities. And I, so I'm not, I'm not favored going above what we already have at this present time. And I, I also think we got to keep looking for another private or multiple private setups. And I realize that's difficult, and it puts a lot on the police, it puts a lot on, you know, the staff. Again, this is, this is 11th hour and changes, and I just don't agree with the tactics that are being put before us.
Mayor, Councilman Bills, are you saying that you don't want to go above and beyond what we've allocated? So are you talking about that total extension compensation number of the $56,840?
I thought we had 400 and roughly 80,000 that was being proposed for us. And West Valley Humane Society is asking for 780,000, almost 300,000 more. So in my mind, if our 480 doesn't solve their issue, you know, are we supposed to authorize another 300? I'm not in favor of authorizing that 300. I don't believe their numbers are correct. I don't think the proposal is correct coming to us, and I believe we're getting strong arm on the issue.
Mayor, I might be confused on the vote then, because I was thinking, are we just voting on the extension through September so we're not voting to allocate all those funds?
This vote is nothing more than we, our, our agreement expired last Friday. So technically, we are out of contract. It really is up to West Valley as to what they do, and we are trying to identify some options. In fact, Eric, you've waited a long time tonight. Would you like to come up and talk to us? We can have Eric share what he's been doing, but we need a solution now. So if we were to go with the 483,000, that's approximately $40,000 a month, is what our new contract will be. I, what I would like to clarify, Councilman Bills, are you suggesting that we pay, I've got to clarify, nothing for the next two months, or that we apply the 40,000 a month to the next two months? Which would be what our FY '26, but, I mean, it's not budgeted for FY '25, but it would be the payment that we just budgeted for FY '26.
My feeling is, is that West Valley Humane Society, I believe, has known that our fiscal year ends, end of September. And they, they came before us this spring, early summer, and expressed, here's what we want to do, and, and these two months. So my preference is the next two months stays under the current system.
The 83,000 that we had budgeted for FY '25?
Yeah. As far as, that'd be two months, right?
Are you saying...
We're not paying 83,000 a month.
We're paying 83,000 for the entire year, is what our former contract was that expired, 83,000 for the entire year. Our new budget will be approximately 40,000 a month under the new 483,000 a year allocation will be approximately 40,000 a month.
Okay. I, I had forgotten those numbers. So if, if, if we can do 40,000 for the next two months and bridge the gap, if we can, if they'll accept 40,000 for the next year and allow us to then find other...
40,000 a month? Yes.
You know? But to go to 700,000 and we're paying 60 some odd thousand, 65,000 a month is over the top. When you look at what Cal State's paying, what Canyon County's paying, I mean, why is Napa subsidizing the other venues? That's my opinion.
Mayor, then I'm, I'm, so I was just thinking that we were paying, we were authorizing to pay through the end of July, which is that 16,796 number, and then the month of August for the 40,044, which would come out to authorizing for $56,840 to get us through the end to figure out what, where we want to move from here. Is that correct?
That's the end of August, yes.
Make a motion?
The end of August or the end of September? I heard you say September 30th.
56,000, 56,840 is the end of August, August 31st.
I'll make a motion to approve.
So your motion is to approve...
The extension.
An extension through the end of August...
Yes, ma'am.
For $56,840.
Yes.
And then there's a second.
So for clarification, and I was driving, so I apologize, I heard the extension was till September 30th. I heard two months. Where did that come from?
We were trying to negotiate that because our fiscal year doesn't end, and so this would give us an extension through the end of August to figure out what we're going to do. So it would be a commitment by August 31st. Eric's been working really hard, and I appreciate his efforts. This would give us through the end of August to come up with a plan.
And this is the police's recommendation, give them the 56,000 to get through August 31st?
No.
No?
But I'll let you speak to it.
I would like to give their recommendation.
It isn't his, yes, thank you.
So the, the, Councilman Griffin and the rest of council, the challenge for police operationally is, and I diligently made calls to kennels and a few vets, trying to get some idea of what the options are on Friday after I last spoke to council last Thursday. There, there really is no kennel space available. The businesses that run kennels typically run them at capacity, and they run an operation that's different than a shelter. When you bring an animal in that you don't know what vaccinations has had, what health issues it has, it can dramatically impact the operations of a kennel where they require that from the people that they normally deal with to know the health of animals that are coming in, because they're often kept in close proximity to one another. So if you bring an animal in with parva or with some other type of vaccination, it can be, it can be very bad for their operation. So quite frankly, there's a lot of those that will simply just say they're not interested. The ones that might be interested have no space. So operationally, if we were to discontinue service with the shelter today, I would have zero direction for animal control officers on the street as to what to do with an injured dog. Today, we took an injured dog to West Valley Humane Society. Last week, we took 14 animals to West Valley Humane Society. Over the past 60 days, we've taken 82, I believe it is. So we're taking animals on an average of more than one a day. We're on track this year to take around 400, which it was just over 400 that we took last year, so we're probably going to be in that same ballpark this year. The, it, it's really my big concern, and even with an extension through August, I'm very concerned with what we can prop up in literally 30 days, because propping up a shelter is a lot more than putting kennels into an open space. There's some planning and zoning issues with how to set that type of an operation up. You got to make sure you have access to the public for adoption. You got to hold on to pretty much every animal for five days by code. It, it is a significant undertaking, along with trying to figure out what staff you're going to dedicate to that, pulling from other areas. So... So operationally, 30 days is not a lot of time, since my exploration on Friday developed a zero for all the calls that I've made. There are, I think, some long-term plans that have developed and are materializing, if I had a year, to a year and a half, to, to bring some options back and progress, proceed some direction. I think we can, we can do that. We're, we're buying time, literally at this point, trying to come up with a solution and alternative, and buying time to bring, bring those towards you. It, it's going to be very, very challenging in the next 30 days to really come up with a solution that, that we can even live, live by while we're trying to do that, so.
Mayor, two questions, if we could. The first being, you, is the Humane Society okay with 56,400 and some odd dollars to get us through August 30th? Have they agreed? But I didn't know if that was a formal agreement, they're going to do that in, in light of that we're not, we already said we're going to short them about 300,000. They're still agreeable and, and willing to go with us up to that point for that amount?
They had extended that through August 30th. Whether they would be willing to take that to September 30th, I couldn't answer that question. The contract for 83,300, I believe, that expired, actually, I believe in June, it was from June until June.
It was July 18th.
Okay, July.
I think it was July 18th.
Is, that didn't follow our fiscal year, so that's why the 83,300 has been paid. We have, we have exhausted that contract. We're operating without a contract at this point, and so.
That brings me to my second question. Perfect, we know that we have at least till August 31st if we make this motion. Have they said anything about the 400,000 to you in the interim between budget setting and today?
No.
So we could potentially be ending a contract no matter what, unless we conjure up 300,000 more dollars with them. So we need to be planning for the possibility of not going with them, because we didn't allocate money to go to them.
Yes, and you're capturing my concern.
Thank you.
That said, with this extension, I would prefer that we actually see if we could do two months, even if we could negotiate and say, okay, let's do 80,000, 80,880, double, it's, instead of one month, let's get to September 30th. It's going to take us two months. Now, this document says this extension reflects a temporary discounted rate offered in good faith through, valid through August 31st, to help foster positive relationships and maintain uninterrupted service, and support continued negotiations to long-term funding. That's what that said in, in the packet, in what they gave us. They do know that we have approved 483,000. Right now, our, what we approved, candidly, I would hope that they're pleased. It isn't what they want, but Caldwell isn't, right now, they're not at all budgeted to come close to us. Canyon County's paying 240, plus 100,000 for some building maintenance. They're not coming close to us. The actual usage is about a third, a third, a third, with the city of Napa bearing the largest burden financially. The fact that we committed 483,000 is totally amazing. When you look at what our budget is, and Doug was probably shocked that we approved that, so we're committed to caring for our animals. That is an amazing budget, what we did approve, and I, I think it speaks volumes for the council to be willing to say this is a need, we get it. I, we're going to need more than a month. Eric, I, you know what, I have to say, he has worked so hard, he's been on the phone every day, he's trying to come up with solutions, and I think with all the phone calls and everything you're doing, what I'm hearing is, we don't have an immediate solution, so we either end tomorrow, and we don't deal with the animals, which we have a statutory responsibility to do. Preston's done the research, and you guys had a document on your table regarding that at the bench. So we have a responsibility, per our ordinance, to care for our animals. So I, the concern would be, can we get it done? Two concerns that I have. Can we get something figured out by the August 31st? Candidly, I don't know that we can. It's, it's bigger than that. So I think we're going to need the extension. And then secondary, I do appreciate Councilman Bills, your thought that we pay them maybe what we've agreed to pay for next year. We have to figure out where to get that this year. I would hope by the end of the year, Doug, because that's an extra 80,000, and that's not counting an extra 16 for these two weeks in here, so we've got to figure out where to pull that money out for FY '25, and put that into a budget amendment. It is a one-time cost out of FY '25.
With council's approval, we could pull it from the operational contingency without needing for amendment, but it still requires council approval.
Okay, so we can come back. Since that's not agendized tonight, or can we give council approval tonight if we authorize this payment?
I think we need to hear from the.
Counsel, sorry, just to clarify the question.
Well, but we have, I mean, our decision tonight is, we have to pay them something for continued service. This is not about the ongoing contract, this is today.
Mayor, call for the vote.
Well, no, just, we're, we're not ready to call for the vote, so I'd like Preston to finish your answer.
Yeah, Mayor, from understanding the question, really, this is an authorization for you to make a offer on behalf of city operations. That's it at its core, right? So I, I guess I would defer to, if the monies are there for that offer, which Doug is nodding affirmatively, this is just an authorization for you to proceed with the operational task.
And we would come back with a budget, with the authorization at the next council meeting, to actually, the authorization, but we would go ahead and move forward.
Yes.
So the motion on the table is 56,840 through August 31st. I guess let's take a vote on that, and if it doesn't pass, we'll come back and come back with a different motion, possibly to authorize something through September 30th, which I would prefer, something through September 30th. So let's call for the vote, and then we'll hopefully come back. Jinguula.
No.
Bills.
No.
Reynolds. Griffin.
No.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Two in favor, four opposed, motion fails.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve funding through the end of September. I think it, let's see, if we were to do the, the additional, that 16,796 to get us through July, and then two times for August and September of the 40,000, that would put us at 96,885.13.
Second.
Mayor, to confirm?
Yes.
It's coming out of the contingency budget. Doug, what's the current numbers of our contingency budget after our takeaways on Thursday?
No, no, this is for '25.
Okay.
Not '26.
So what do we have?
So '25, I think we had about 700,000 in that budget, and we have not touched it, and will not unless council approves use of it. So the, the benefit here is, this is the one-time expenditure, and will be independent of what you choose going forward.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Jinguula.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you, council. I will say that, that vote communicates very positive intent from our city council, and I think that should speak volumes, and I hope it does. With our commitment to fund 483 next year, plus the commitment this year, it speaks volumes. Thank you.
So Mayor?
Yes.
If it's not acceptable to the group, I think, or even if the dollar amount is there, we should be also looking at a per-animal breakdown out of that money versus just automatically that money goes to them.
Okay.
From the standpoint of, I think we need to identify animals and where they came from, and whether we ever collect, if we're paying for Caldwell, and Canyon County, and Middleton, and others, candidly, they should see an invoice from the city of Napa.
Mayor?
If, if these people's addresses aren't in the city of Napa proper, I don't think just because the zip code is, that we have an obligation to subsidize these other entities. And somehow, there should be some accountability, and I know it's a pain to bring that forward, but this, this isn't right, that there's other entities who are paying half of what we're proposing to pay, and would be like a quarter of what the Humane Society is wanting to charge us.
Thank you, and we have discussed it. We, we have discussed this, so, and we will. Thank you.
I, I think just one additional piece on, to piggyback off of Councilman Bills' point, what gave me pause and a lot of hesitation during budget setting is not knowing how long we're housing these animals either. Some months, some potentially years. I think it's very difficult to not have a plan or a strategy moving forward. Are we just going to keep growing perpetuity and keep footing the bill for the rest of the county, as well as for the Humane Society to not make a tough decision?
We, we will not be footing a bill for the rest of the community, and I say that because they, they are putting measures, and when we enter into, and Preston will be working on a new agreement with them, we will ensure that they will, we will not be, we'll deal with that in the language of our agreement. So, thank you. We have nine on our agenda. This is unfinished business. Nine-one is an action item. It's the first reading of ordinance for vacation of an unused portion of existing city of Napa utility easement on a 3.34 acre parcel in the Community Business Zoning District, located at 383 and 395 Caldwell Boulevard. This is for Paul Hilbig, Epic Shine, representing Cobblestone Idaho Property Co., and it is requested to pass under suspension of rules. And north of the city of Napa, Canyon County, Idaho, vacating a portion of an easement located on the property generally described as 383 and 395 Caldwell Boulevard, Napa, Idaho, 83651. Parcels R09664 and R09663, consisting of approximately 3.34 acres, more or less, located in the southeast, one-fourth of Section 16, township three, north range two west, Boise, Meridian. Said vacation being a 1,990 square foot portion of a sewer and water utility easement, more particularly described below, in Napa, Canyon County, Idaho, and directing the city engineer to alter the use and area map and other applicable maps accordingly, providing for an effective date, providing percebability, and repealing all ordinances, resolutions, orders, and parts that have been conflict here with.
I move that this pass under suspension of rules.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Jinguula.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. We are ready for number 10 on the agenda, executive session, and I would stand for motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 742061C and E.
Second.
Roll call. Sorry. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Jinguula.
Yes.
Bills.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Hammerfield.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. We will step into executive session. Thank you very much.